We don't want to do anything that appears to be said in person from somebody else.
Balden wants a dollar more because Jacob's making a dollar more than him and they were talking about it.
Thank you for the charge.
They weren't talking about one like that.
Oh, no problem. Yeah.
That's what they do.
It's by the time I leave today, but that's at least right now.
That's the right way. Exactly.
Oh, man.
You're making more than me. It's like, I do more than you.
No chomp. It's a chomp meeting.
It is a chomp meeting. They're upstairs, though, so.
That's all right. That's all right.
I'll go get some chomp.
You gotta, yeah, call a recess.
Chomp recess?
Call a chomp recess.
John, are you ready? Everybody up here ready?
Yep, I'm good.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of August 21st, 2025. If we can please take, please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Christopher Cool.
Here.
John Moody.
Here.
Matthew Lund.
Here.
Derek Tauntlet.
Here.
Chris Williams.
Here.
Chairman Charles Craig. Vice Chairman Jamie Gerardi.
Here.
Okay, the Planning Commission is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. We meet twice a month. The Planning Commission holds public hearings and transmits to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on rezonings, conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Planning Commission also serves as a local planning agency, and as the LPA, this body makes recommendations in regard to the consistency with the adopted Pasco County Comprehensive Plan of proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendments and Land Development Code Amendments. If anybody is in opposition to any Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Land Development Code Amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it is important that you attend the appropriate Board of County Commissioners meeting. Okay, we don't have any minutes today, so I guess at this point, before we start the meeting, this is where we'll take public comments for any items that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody here to comment on anything not on the agenda?
Good afternoon. I would just like to note that we have nobody signed up to speak for public comment, and we have nobody signed up on WebEx as well.
Okay. Okay, with that being said, we'll go ahead and move on to the public hearing itself. The public hearing procedures, for those of you who have not been here before, in-person participants and participants attending through WebEx, including the applicant, who have pre-registered for the Planning Commission meeting will be notified by county staff when they will be permitted to speak. Applicants will be limited to five minutes, and other participants will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is approved, at least in 24 hours in advance of the meeting. And I don't think we have any of those today. In-person participants and WebEx participants must announce the following items before speaking, and at that time, they will be sworn by the clerk, but we'll actually, we'll swear everybody in. Let's go ahead and swear everybody in now. If you plan on giving any testimony today, if you plan on speaking, if you can please stand and raise your right hand so he can be sworn.
Do you swear or present the testimony you have to give as a treat to help you guys?
I do, ma'am.
And when you come up to speak, if you can, please state your name, your address, the agenda item, and the agenda title, and what you plan to speak on. Then the three- or five-minute timer will start. Today's agenda, or our agenda, is broken up into three sections. There's a continuance section, a consent section, and a regular item section. Today, we have five public hearing items on the agenda. There's one withdrawal item, one continuance, and three consent items. The consent items will be approved by regular vote unless the item is pulled from consent. Once a motion is made on the consent agenda, the Chair will call for a second, and the motion will be voted on. Madam Clerk, do we have proof?
The items for advertising this day are timed on March 5th, 2025, June 4th, 2025, July 23rd, 2025, August 6th, 2025, and August 13th, 2025.
Thank you. And before we start, I forgot to remind anybody, if you have anything that makes noise, cellphone pager, anything else, please make sure you put it in the silent position so we're not disturbed. Okay, Gianna?
Okay, good afternoon, Planning Commission. Gianna German, Planning, Development, and Economic Growth. Item PC 1 is PDE 25-0093, a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPAS 24, in the name of law property, providing for an amendment to the future land use map 2-15, Sheet 20, changing from RES 6, residential six dwelling units per gross acre, to COM, commercial, on approximately 4.67 acres of real property, located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Lake Patience and Purdue Drive. And this is coming with the request to withdraw the application.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anybody here that wishes to speak on this item? Okay. We need a motion to withdraw, or this is just notification?
Withdrawn.
Just notification. Okay. Very good. Okay, very good.
Item PC 2 is PDE 25-7881, a rezoning request in the name of enclave at Livingston MPUD, Academy at the Lakes, Inc., for a change in zoning from AR Agricultural Residential District to MPUD, Master Planned Unit Development District. And this is coming with the request to continue the item to September 16th, 2025, Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 PM in Newport Ritchie.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anybody here that wishes to speak on this item?
Is it September 16th or 18th?
I'm sorry, correction, September 18th, to continue to September 18th.
Okay, and that's our only continuance item?
Move to continue item PC 2 to the September 18th meeting in Newport Ritchie.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item PC 3 is a staff-initiated project from the Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources Department, and you will be sitting as a local planning agency for this item. It's PDE 25-0429, a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPAS 2503, in the name of ELOP CON map amendment, providing for an amendment to the future land use map 2-15, Sheets 5, 11, 12, 17, 9, and 23, changing from AGR, agricultural rule, RES 1, residential one dwelling unit per gross acre, RES 3, residential three dwelling units per gross acre, RES 6, residential six dwelling units per gross acre, RES 9, residential nine dwelling units per gross acre, RES 12, residential 12 dwelling units per gross acre, and ROR, retail office residential, all going to CON, conservation lands, on approximately 2,813 acres of real property located throughout Pasco County. And this is coming with a recommendation that the local planning agency find the proposed amendment consistent with the Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, and this is county-initiated, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Okay, so.
Move to approve item PC 3.
Second.
Our motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item PC 4 is PDE 25-0425, an ordinance amending Pasco County Land Development Code, Chapter 100, creating Section 106.6, presented by staff.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Rebecca Boe, Planning, Development, and Economic Growth, here today to present item PDE 25-0425, Section 106.6, amendments to the LDC. And I do have a presentation. So on July 15th, the Board of County Commissioners considered the applicability of Senate Bill 180 on the county's ability to propose, adopt, or enforce any new regulations following a hurricane. At that meeting, the Board directed the county to proceed with business as usual, except for imposing any new regulations that could be considered more restrictive or burdensome on properties that have been damaged by a hurricane. So in furtherance of this direction, section, we are proposing Section 106.6, creating amendments after August 1st, 2024. This amendment essentially states that the county will not impose any new, any new LDCs that could be considered more restrictive or burdensome on properties that have been damaged by a hurricane until October 2nd, 2007, or one year after a hurricane that resulted in a federal disaster declaration. This would also apply to resolutions, manuals, or written procedures. This slide is of the actual text, and then I recommend that the local planning agency find the proposed amendment consistent with the Comprehensive Plan.
Mr. Chair, could I just add one statement to this?
Yes, go ahead.
So we are working on, Mr. Moody sent me an email. I thought he raised a very good point, which is, if you can go back to the text.
Sure.
The law, and doesn't really clarify what is property damage by a hurricane, but we do have a database. The Building and Construction Services Department maintains a database of properties that were damaged by a hurricane, and so we likely will add a definition to what that means, property damage by hurricanes, that refers to those databases, because we are able to track, we do track them by partial ID. So there will be an additional language added to this that defines what property, which properties are damaged by a hurricane. We're just not, we don't have that finalized yet because we're working with BCS on how exactly to define what that means.
Okay.
That was the only thing I wanted to add.
Okay, anybody else up here?
And I'll thank Mr. Moody for that point.
Thanks, John.
So one question I've got is, so are we then exempting buildings that are built after, on a new land development code, do not have to comply to that if they're later damaged? So they go back to the 2004 when they're being reconstructed?
So what this is saying is that, first of all, you're not exempting them from the entire code.
Right.
You're exempting them from only any regulations that are considered more restrictive burdensome than were doubted after August 1st of 2024. So, and it's only for a period of time. Sort of a pause. So I'm not sure if I understand your question.
I mean, it's a short period, but I'm just thinking if a property is developed based on the Land Development Code after the August 1st date, say, next year, then is damaged in a hurricane, is the reconstruction of that building now held to the lesser standard of the old?
If another hurricane hits, it re-triggers this code provision. Because what it says is, it's to the later of October 2nd, 2027, or one year after hurricane makes landfall in Pasco, whichever occurs later. So, so let's just say a property were built today, another hurricane hits us, then for one year after that, this provision applies again.
It has to make landfall in Pasco to re-trigger?
Within 100 miles of any part of Pasco County.
And a disaster declaration as well, right?
Yeah, which almost always happens. If a hurricane has made landfall in Pasco, we almost always get a federal disaster declaration. But does that answer your question? I don't know if I'm answering it.
Just reading the text again, sorry. I think so, yeah.
So, in essence, if a property gets repeatedly damaged by a hurricane, this provision could continue to, I guess arguably, assist them for more restrictive burdensome regulations? If we got hit with a hurricane every year, it would just re-trigger every year?
Right. So that's why, so if there's a newer building that's built after this, it gets triggered again, are they held to a less burdensome standard than they were actually built under?
So you're talking about, okay, so it was, it's built after, it's built after August 1st, 2024, and before October 2nd, 2027?
Right.
And then it gets damaged again by another hurricane?
Or if it doesn't exist now, gets built under the more burdensome code, is damaged, is it then?
If it gets damaged again, and they're trying to rebuild after being damaged again, they would have the benefit of this provision again. In other words, every time a hurricane comes through and damages a building, for at least one year after that happens, they'd have the benefit of this provision. The one exception to that is for the hurricanes that just hit us last year, the pause goes to October 2nd, 2027. It's not a year. It's longer than a year. But every time the property gets damaged, it potentially triggers this happening again. Am I making?
Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
David, I have a question. The language says shall not apply to the construction, reconstruction, or redevelopment of any property damaged by a hurricane. You're presupposing that an undeveloped property cannot be damaged by a hurricane?
So this goes to the definition of what is property damage by hurricane? I've spoken to our BCS department. That definition will clarify that it's damage to structures, because that's what we track in terms of, and I believe that likely was the legislative intent, is that you're trying to protect those property owners that had structural damage from the hurricane, if they're trying to reconstruct or redevelop that property. I don't believe the intent was that it was applying to just vacant land. But the definition, when we define property damage by hurricane, it will be limited to structural damage that's recorded in our database of properties damaged by hurricane. I mean, if I read the legislative history of this bill, all of the discussion is about helping those that were, that had their homes or businesses damaged by a hurricane. I do not believe there was any intent to help a vacant landowner.
So, David, just a general question, and I mean, is the purpose of needing to do this amendment, is this to provide some provision to the county? I mean, as far as Senate Bill 180 goes, was it, is there questions on what it applies to? Is that why this has to be?
Yes.
Put in place?
So there's a couple of reasons. One is the law is not clear at all. So we believe this interpretation is consistent with the legislative intent, and is the only interpretation that would be constitutional. So that's one reason we're codifying it.
Are you at liberty? And I understand if you're not. Are you at liberty to explain why you think that's the only way it can be constitutional?
Because I think if it was interpreted any other manner, it would violate single-subject requirements. It would be arbitrary and capricious, and violate constitutional requirements for standing. I can send you the case law. There's, we have, there's, we've drafted some whereas clauses that I don't think those made it to the Planning Commission, right?
No.
But they're part of the whereas clause for the ordinance that explained that. But that's the short version of, the bottom line is this act, it was, it was an act related to emergencies and emergency management. So if the property was not damaged by a hurricane, those are the only people that were affected by the emergency. Anybody else was not affected by the emergency if they were not damaged by the hurricane. There's a general rule that your law has to match the title of your law and the subject of your law, and it can't be arbitrary and capricious.
So I'm not sure I agree.
Where'd you get your law degree, Mr. Moody?
I knew that was coming.
I'd like to see your constitutional analysis.
I'm not. I just want to give you an example. I'm a business owner, and my power was out for three weeks. Was I damaged?
I think this, this is, this law is dealing with somebody trying to construct, reconstruct, or redevelop after a hurricane. So presumably, you need to have some structural damage to your business to have been affected. I mean, you may have lost money as a result of the hurricane.
Financially damaged.
But that doesn't mean you were damaged by the hurricane. Go ahead. I mean, but more importantly, you have to look at what this law is, it's dealing with regulatory amendment. Our regulations aren't affecting the loss of power anyway. What our regulations affect is your ability to redevelop, reconstruct, reconstruct your business. And so I think the legislature was trying to stop us from making it more difficult for you to reconstruct your business. If your, if your house was damaged, your business was damaged, if we, the legislature did not want us to make it more difficult for somebody who was.
Well, I, I'm sitting here looking at the text of SB 180, and if any of you want a copy, I got it here, and I, not my intent to get in debate with the county attorney's office.
I'm happy to debate it with you.
I understand your.
I'm not sure you're gonna win this debate, but I'm happy to debate it.
Your, your duty as the county attorney is to represent the Board of County Commissioners, and I understand that. And if the Board of County Commissioners wants to attempt to sidestep and/or circumvent Senate Bill 180, or come up with a creative interpretation of what Senate Bill 180 is, that I understand that that's your obligation to try to defend that position. So I don't wish to get into some kind of debate over with you about that. I'll just say this. In Florida, the law requires that you come to a complete stop at a red light before you turn right. Okay? Every day, we see people that roll through red lights. But, and maybe they disagree with the law that they needed to stop. The other morning, I was on my way down 19, and a school bus stopped, and its stop signs came out, its red lights were flashing, and there were no kids, no parents, and there were three lanes of US 19 backed up waiting for this school bus, but it's not proper for me to go around the bus. The law stops me from doing that. I don't get to pick and choose whether the situation fits my, my need. And I'll just say, for that particular reason, I wouldn't be supportive of this language, and I'll say something else, and I'm not speaking to you. I'm speaking to the board when I say this. We spend a lot of money paying lobbyists to go to Tallahassee to seek earmarked appropriations for Pasco County. Do we not think we're going to draw the ire of the legislature who passed this bill with only two dissenting votes in the House and one dissenting vote in the Senate? I mean, that's a pretty good majority of the state's House of Representatives and State Senate that voted in support of this bill, and we're going to go ask them for money, and at the same time, kick them in the teeth. And our own local legislative delegation, all of them voted for this bill. They can choose to do that. I'm advising that I don't think that's smart politics. I copied you on a letter. I have no idea whether you knew that letter existed, but Orange County attempted to change its Comprehensive Plan, and the Florida Department of Commerce citing Senate Bill 180, rejected it ab initio, as is the language in the statute. And I don't understand why we think we're going to be treated any differently. Like I said, I don't want to get into a legal argument here. I'm looking at, do we really want to kick sand in the face of the governor and our legislature? I'm just not thinking that's a smart idea. That's just my personal opinion, and.
That's not, okay, so that's not a legal analysis. That's a policy issue, but, but, but.
That's what I'm saying, because this is a policy issue by the board. I don't want to get into a legal dispute about it.
So my legal response is the boards sort of uphold the Constitution of the state of Florida, and so they have a duty to apply laws in a constitutional manner. And in my opinion, this definite, this interpretation of the law applies the law in a constitutional manner. Your policy point is well taken, but we've asked some of the legislators who voted for this bill, they thought they were voting for this. I think it's probably poorly drafted, but if you ask, we've asked multiple legislators, our lobbyists asked multiple legislators, what did they think they were voting for? They thought they were voting to protect properties that were damaged by a hurricane. They did not want to make things more, that if somebody went sustained damage by a hurricane, they didn't think it should be more difficult for them to have to rebuild their homes, rebuild their businesses, owing that damage? And if you, you, you go ask all those people who voted for it, what they thought they were voting for, I bet you 95% of them would agree that's what they thought they were voting for.
I, I would hope.
So I don't think we're poking our eye of anybody's eye.
I would hope that there, I would hope that our local legislative delegation isn't like the Democrat Party while passing the Affordable Care Act, and that you don't get to know what's in the bill until after we pass the bill. It's only 28 pages. I'm sure they're capable of reading the 28 pages that is Senate Bill 180.
Well, actually, this bill, this language got inserted in this bill on the last day of the session at the, basically, the 11th hour. I'm not sure how many of the legislators actually took the time to read it and debate whether, what its intent was. So while I would normally agree with you that we shouldn't poke the legislature because there's that bad idea, I don't think that the legislature intended to have the law applied beyond properties damaged by hurricane.
Then should we not allow the legislature to go back and fix its mistake?
Yeah, and we have, we have a legislative proposal to the legislature to do that very thing. The problem we have is that in the interim, this is a retroactive law.
I understand that.
We have, we have regulations, and this was to Mr. Gerardi's point, why we're doing this. We have regulations that we already adopted after August. We have to do something between now and whenever the legislature might fix it to implement the law. We're implementing the way we think the legislature. it the way we think the legislature intended and the way that we think is constitutional. And we do, our, our own board doesn't want to make things more difficult for somebody who was actually damaged by hurricane. So we do think they should be exempt, even from the regulations we adopted after August 1st of 2024.
I understand that. And that's a policy decision they can make. I'm just telling you, for me, speaking for myself, and I'm not trying to claim that I have higher, better morals than anybody else, just for me, I'm looking at what the plain text of the law says, and I have no wish or desire to violate that. I would also say, and I'm sure you'll have some legal defense for this, but I looked up, for what reasons can the governor remove a county commissioner or one of us planning commissioners from this position, and misfeasance is one of those? Then I had to go do a whole bunch of AI research as to what constitutes misfeasance. And I would, I'm reasonably convinced that that, passing this may constitute a misfeasance. And be careful not to say the word malfeasance, it's misfeasance. But I speak only for myself. This is just something I'm not comfortable supporting. I have no problem with the rest of the board. If they want us to agree to this, I don't judge anybody for that. Just for me, this is something I can't recommend.
That's your prerogative. I'm just saying, you have not, you have not reviewed the case law on...
I'm not here to get in a legal argument with you, David. That's not my, not my place here. And I understand what your place is, and I respect that.
But if you look at the entire law, and you have it right there, the real remedy...
No, I actually have the only...
If we violate it, is that somebody could sue us and get attorney's fees for implementing, for not applying it properly. The county, the board of county commissioners is the one that assumes that liability, not planning commission members.
No, I understand that. I don't wish to commit what I think can be considered a misfeasance.
That's your opinion. I don't think that...
That's why we're all here. And there's never going to be 100% unanimity on every issue. Sometimes we are in lockstep. Sometimes there are split votes, and that may be what happens here today. I'm just telling you where I personally am at.
Okay.
Well, obviously, I, I mean, I don't know a lot of the details, and I definitely am not going to get in any kind of debate, but, I mean, I know other counties and other county attorneys have taken a position contrary to the, to Pasco's on this ordinance. I know there was something just either last week or this week as far as moratoriums and complaint amendments, et cetera, that barely passed, and then that was against the county attorney's recommendation. So, I mean, we kind of get put in a spot here where this is something we're asked to vote on, but we don't really, I mean, that's way above my head. I can speak for myself.
Well, we went to, we went to our board, and Rebecca summarized it. We went to the board and asked the board, what position do they want to take on this bill? And this was the direction we got. This implements the board's direction.
Yeah, and just for clarification, I'm looking at this as, my role at the planning commission is not to make policy. It's only to make a recommendation to the board. My personal recommendation is that you adhere to the law and that you take advantage of the opportunities that's in the law. I mean, the, the law lays out a, a procedure. If a city or county has a question about one of its regulations, they can go to a court of competent jurisdiction and seek some type of ruling on it. There's a path. There, there's other opportunities. If they're, if you're worried about the constitutionality, you could, you know, sue the legislature, I guess, and try to get to the Florida Supreme Court so that you can review the constitutionality. But I'm just, I can't in good conscience recommend what I perceive as just breaking the law.
Remind me, let me remind you what your statutory duty is as relates to this amendment, which may give you some comfort. You are not asked to make an opinion about whether this law is legal or not, whether it's constitutional or not. Your sole duty is to determine is it inconsistent or consistent with a comp plan. I don't even know if this is a comp plan issue. I mean, I could tell you that, now...
I don't know when we look at the new comp plan later today, how do I determine if it's consistent with the comp plan?
Well, I could, I could, I, I could tell you, when the comp plan, the comp plan has a similar issue when we do the update, but there likely would be similar language in the comp plan when that comes forward. But the comp plan that's in effect today doesn't even address this issue.
Well, then how can I determine whether that's consistent with the comp plan that doesn't?
Well, I don't think you can say it's inconsistent with the comp plan. If it is, you'd have to tell me where, what provision of the comp plan it's inconsistent with.
I understand.
My point is that if somebody tried to accuse you of malfeasance, I think you could say, my only duty was to determine whether it was inconsistent or consistent with a comp plan, not whether it was good policy, illegal, unconstitutional, any of those things.
I understand your position.
So, but to Mr. Girardi's point, I think that the various county attorneys and cities and counties are still evaluating how they want to deal with this issue. I could tell you that Pasco is not alone in taking this position.
Sure.
I've already spoken to other counties that have taken a similar position.
Anybody else? Okay.
And just editorially, there's other counties that have also implemented the Live Local Act on its face. Pasco has chosen not to do that. It's not the only issue where we may not be, you know, enforcing a law strictly as Mr. Moody has interpreted.
There's not too many laws I read that are crystal clear. And I don't spend a lot of time reading them.
You know, all that being said, I want you to understand, I don't particularly like this legislation. I feel like the legislature is stepping on Pasco County's ability to determine its own destiny. But at the end of the day, I just feel like this is what the law says. I read the law. I don't see where it says anywhere in here, applies only to hurricane-damaged properties. Maybe that was the intent, but that's not what's in the language, at least as I read it. But again, I speak only for me on that issue.
And I understand, and you don't have the benefit of three years of law school and 20 years of legal practice that I have, right? And the arguments that I can make regarding its constitutionality.
Okay. Did I already ask for a public comment? Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Thank you, Rebecca.
Yes.
Hi, William McCaw, 7638 Antioch Drive, Newport, Ritchie. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My only concern is the language specifically addressing landfall within 100 miles of Pasco County. As landfall is defined, I think, is the important thing. Helene didn't make landfall anywhere close to 100 miles within Pasco County. And so I think there may be a change of language, such as if Pasco County declares an emergency in those situations. That's my only comment.
Yeah, well, I may agree or not, that's, that's straight out of, that language is straight out of Senate Bill 180.
No, it's not, actually.
Okay, well, then tell me...
Because I got the language here.
All right.
It says, the Senate Bill 180 says, within 100 miles of the track of the hurricane, not where it last made landfall.
All right, well, let me see.
It's, um, sorry, it's number one, 252-4221.
Within 100 miles of the track of a storm declared, okay, so, but then two says for one year after hurricane makes landfall.
Right. So the time, the time clock, in my opinion, my non-lawyer, non-constitutional attorney's opinion, is that the plain language says that the time clock starts one year after the hurricane makes landfall. So the time clock didn't start while Helene was passing us along the coast. It started when it hit...
You think it should say within one, has...
This is the version that the governor signed.
Has, where the track of the storm, within 100 miles of the track of a storm.
But you still have to have the landfall date in there, so...
Yeah, I mean, it has to make landfall, though, because otherwise it would never trigger it. I mean, I guess that's the problem, is that...
One year after hurricane has made landfall and the, and the track is within 100 miles? Is that what it says?
That's what it probably should say.
Mr. Chair, and I, I'm only doing this not because I want to debate this, just so that you guys have the language. I brought copies for you all, if you would like copies.
No, I'm, I'm open to changing this. I'm just trying to figure out how we change it. So, because I think it has to make landfall, otherwise it doesn't trigger two.
Right, yeah.
So if, so if a...
Yeah, it says for one year after a hurricane makes landfall, an impacted local government may not propose or adopt.
So, the, the issue is if it only stayed in the Gulf, the reason it says landfall is because, if it only stayed in the Gulf, it would never trigger, trigger number two. Like, the time period would never start, start. So...
We're suggesting the language is minorly flawed.
So, I, so I guess...
The ironic thing is a hurricane can make a close call and then turn back out to sea and never make landfall and still be...
The language in your ord, the proposed ordinance, I don't want to call it yours, has made landfall within 100 miles. I think the difference here is that they're actually trying to take into account what happened with Helene, that we were within 100 miles of the track of that center of the hurricane, and of course, that put us in the wrong side of the wrong quadrant for storm surge and, you know, to get all of the wind from Milton, even though it may not have actually made landfall on our coast. That's, that's the damage we suffered. But I would agree that according to this, the time clock doesn't start until after it makes landfall.
So I think it probably should, has last made landfall if the track of the storm is within 100 miles of any portion of Pasco County.
Yes.
I think that would be accurate. I think it has to make landfall, though. I don't know how you can...
I think the, the track determines the area, 100 miles of the track, and then the landfall date determines when the time clock starts.
So I think, Rebecca, if you're drafting, I think what it should actually say is within...
Resultant in federal disaster, that could...
Has last made landfall if the track, after the word landfall, say, if the track of the storm is within 100 miles of any portion of Pasco County.
Or you can say, is within 100 miles of any portion of Pasco County and has made landfall.
I'm fine with that, too.
And has made landfall.
I'm fine with either way, either version. You're basically saying it needs to, I think we're basically saying the same thing.
Two qualifiers.
It's got to make landfall, and it's got, the track has to be within 100 miles of Pasco County. I, I get the point. I, I'm fine with that change. I don't think, that's not a constitutional argument, Mr. Moody. That's just a...
Not here to make constitutional arguments.
That does make it more consistent with the bill text. In the bill, it defines impacted local government as somebody that's within 100 miles of the track of the storm. And then for one year after the hurricane landfall, an impacted local government may not propose or adopt. And that goes into that.
Okay, so Rebecca, are you clear on how you're redrafting that?
Yes.
And I understand that it does say the word "may not propose" or "adopt." So not only is they've made it illegal to adopt, they've made it illegal to even think about it.
Well, the issue is that, with that, as you go through that in conjunction with 728, some of this we already adopted. So you can't, if we already adopted it, it's, you, too late to not propose it if we already adopted it.
I'm sure you'll have fun in front of the Supreme Court arguing all of these nuances.
I can't wait, Mr. Moody. I've got nothing else to do.
Okay, is there anybody else here for public comment? Okay, do we have a motion?
Thanks for bringing that up.
Is eh, official motion?
Anyone?
So again, I'll remind you, your duty, your only duty here is to determine whether it's consistent with a comp plan or not. So you can, you can make a motion finding it consistent with a comp plan, even if you don't agree with any of the rest of it.
I'll move that we find it consistent with the comp plan.
With the...
With the changes.
Okay. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
And then, if, because does that include us adding an additional change to define properties damaged by hurricane?
Yes.
That we just discussed, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries with Mr. Moody dissenting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving right along. PC 5.
Item PC 5 is PDE 250007, an ordinance amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Section 802, presented by staff.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioner Amanda Hill, planning, development and economic growth. File number PDE 25 dash 0007 is a proposed amendment to Section 802, tree preservation and replacement. Recent activities regarding this section of the code include an LPA workshop on June 5th, 2025, the adoption of Resolution 25 dash 291 by the B O C C. This resolution clarified the use of funds, administration, and increased the contribution rates to the tree mitigation fund. There was also a LPA workshop on June, on August 7th, 2025. As a reminder, the rates of contribution that were updated by the B O C C on 7/15 include the update of the rates from $50 per inch to $75 per inch for all project types. For trees that are classified as a heritage tree, a payment of $150 per inch. A heritage tree is hereby defined as a live oak that is equal to or greater than 34 inches DBH, or a southern magnolia that is greater than or equal to 24 inches DBH. Those trees would also have to have a condition rating of good or better as determined by the ISA condition rating system.
Can you remind us what DBH stands for?
Uh, diameter at breast height. And Section 1 of that resolution states that the effective date of these contribution rates will be upon the repeal of Section 802.3C1B3, subsections A to D of the LDC. The purpose of this amendment would be to remove the contribution rates that are currently referenced in that section of the code, as well as to remove the purposes and authorized locations that are referenced in Section 802.3E. These sections currently conflict with the adopted resolution, and this amendment would resolve said conflict. Staff recommends that the LPA finds the proposed amendment consistent with a comprehensive plan, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Amanda, the first, first question I have is, I guess, how did we get here and why did we not just change the fees in the ordinance rather than adopt the resolution?
My understanding of the matter is that the fees and whether or not it changes at the discretion of the board through the resolution and not through the LDC. This language regarding the fees was not initially intended to be within the LDC.
But it is.
Correct.
Well, here's, I mean...
It is, but it's with a reference that says it'll be adopted by a resolution.
My, my problem is, and I, we've gotten into this several times before, when we pull stuff out of the code and make it to where it can be modified, approved, et cetera, through resolution, the public never knows about it. I still question how many people really knew that this fee was being revised by the resolution when it got revised by the board, and the fact that there was absolutely zero grandfather clause for anybody that was even in current review. I mean, the way the resolution was adopted, and this was clarified at August 7th when we met for the workshop, I mean, you could be literally waiting on staff to draft an approval memo, and all of a sudden you get hit with these new fees. I mean, that's a huge problem for a lot of big projects that Pasco County has spent a lot of time and effort trying to bring to Pasco County. I mean, we, we had people come to the workshop, and they, they gave examples of three, four, five, $7 million tree impact fees that they were going to have to pay versus a couple hundred thousand dollars that they were facing before these fees got modified and the maximums got eliminated. versus a couple hundred thousand dollars that they were facing before these fees got modified and the, and the maximums got eliminated. So I, I, this one really, this one just doesn't sit right. I don't understand why we're not just revising the fees in the ordinance.
I would agree with you.
Yeah, it's the issue I have is the lack of the grandfather language.
Well, the TBBA came and, and asked for a phase-in schedule, and I believe in the prior version of the tree ordinance that had been presented by staff and ultimately withdrawn, there had been some agreement regarding how those new fees would be implemented, and this seems to fly in the face of that.
So, I think there's two different issues here. One is like where you put the regulation. The other issue is how much involvement there was by the development committee in the regulation, because even if it was a resolution, you in theory could have a resolution go through all the same processes that an ordinance changed. I mean, you could go to have it go to the horizontal round table, you could have it go to planning committee, I mean, you could run a resolution through the same processes as an ordinance. So I think staff probably needs to address why the resolution didn't go through those processes, if it didn't. And I don't know if it did or didn't.
Well, I mean, I think, there was stakeholder meetings, I heard, and then I know it went to the board, but I, I mean, I, I watched that board meeting for the resolution, and it was, I, I've seen, been to plenty of these meetings, and I've seen things that people show up for. And when you're starting to hit somebody with multimillion dollar tree, tree payments or obligations, I find it hard to believe that nobody would have been in attendance if they didn't know that was going to be approved as part of that resolution.
It was on the consent agenda.
On the consent agenda, correct. So-
I do recall that at the March 20th hearing, when the item regarding tree preservation was previously brought forward, there was a discussion with the planning commission regarding whether or not the fees could be adopted along with the other changes to Section 802, or if that was something that could be done separately. And my understanding was that, the direction that was that we can go ahead and have the board update that separately as necessary, if that was the desire of the board. Patrick, I don't know if you wanted to speak anything additional to that. I know you were still working on the project at that point.
I don't know this. Patrick Decker, planning, development, economic growth. What is, what is the question specifically again?
So at the March 20th, you didn't, when you brought the item forward, and planning commission recommended that if the board desired that the fees could be adopted separately from the other changes to Section 802.
Sure, yes, if I recall correctly, we withdrew the code amendments, but I think the planning commission did at the time say, we'll move forward with changing the fees, which is a general statement.
Right, but to play devil's advocate, I'm not sure planning commission said, but don't get, don't get development community involvement in it.
Right, I mean.
Mr. Chairman, David Engel, planning and development, economic growth. As I recall from recalling the BCC meeting, we were directed by counsel at that time that we'd have to come, the board approved a resolution changing the fees. We were directed that to perfect this, we have to amend the LDC and remove the old fees from the LDC because it says adopt by resolution. So, we were just performing our task as directed by the board.
Right, David, I think the question that Mr. Girardi is asking is what level of input did you get from the development community before having the board adopt the resolution?
We've had extensive input with the TBBA, and as I reported back to the board, there were amendments. We had incorporated their suggestions in the draft. They were removed, and I failed to notify the TBBA from my last correspondence with them in April, and I was on the record already two meetings ago, and I discussed it, or, you know, that, that I'll take the, I'll take the heat for it. So, worked through with the TBBA, set up a meeting with the TBBA to meet with the BCC chair and talk about how their views can be accommodated and what the policy goals and objectives are of the Board of County Commissioners. I, I can't speak for the board, but the chair has assumed that role, and that meeting is already calendared.
And can't this wait until that meeting happens? That doesn't, that would seem very unfair to the stakeholders.
Well, that, that is a fair proposition, and, you know, I, I certainly endorse that.
Well, we've already issued an opinion that the changes to the fees don't take effect until this ordinance is adopted. So, if the planning commission is not comfortable with this ordinance moving forward until you've seen the or heard that the resolution has been updated consistent with this upcoming meeting, I, you can continue the item until that, that's within your prerogative.
When's this meeting, again?
I believe it's next week.
Yeah, I guess I know we have other people here to speak on this, so I guess, any other questions for staff, and we'll go and take public comment? Okay.
Barbara Willhite, 63, 27 Grand Boulevard, representing nobody. But somebody, this is my 30th year doing this, and I have a little different idea. I think the fee should be in the ordinance, and I think you should remove the, the ability to do it by resolution, because in theory, things could have happened differently, but if there wasn't the ability to do this by resolution, they wouldn't have happened the way they did. This was on the consent agenda, nobody knew about it. This board, this planning commission said, we think that a fee increase should go forward, but this didn't even come back to them. If it was, if the ability to not have, to have this done by resolution, if you take out the ability to have this done by resolution, this issue would have come to this planning commission and be vetted by you professionals who work with us all the time, and there would have been a recommendation going to the board that would have been, had some other input. You could have collected stakeholder input, you could have collected your own input, and there could be. And I sat through, I can't tell you how many meetings, I volunteered my time and, and watched a back and forth between staff and the TBBA representatives who were volunteering their time, too, to try to come up with a resolution on how to raise those fees and how to grandfather them in. This resolution was different from those conversations. So what, as a process person and a fairness person in how we do things, when we take things out of the code, for example, there used to be in Section 300, there used to be a table that said the deadlines to get things done. And I remember when that came out of the code, I objected, because, no, don't worry, don't worry, it's going in the development manual. But since then, those dates have never been complied with, and clients like to see those. They're like, they like to look at the code and be able to see it. So, the unintended consequences, when you take things out of the code and you allow it to be done by resolution on a consent agenda that bypasses you all, and it's not a public hearing, this where, where in theory, things can be done different, but they don't have to be. And so what I'm saying to you is if you pass this ordinance that's been suggested by staff, you're condoning this process and allowing it to perpetuate itself in the future. So what you should be recommending is either table it or say, we recommend that the fees actually be in the ordinance, and that you have to, we take out the ability to do it by resolution, so that this fact pattern that should have never happened, doesn't happen again. So, again, speaking of nobody other than, you know, making good policy, and I don't think the board made good policy that day. I don't think they knew what the unintended consequences or what the, actually, the consequences was of that action. And you heard TBBA come here and explain to you all what the consequences now, and now they're having to have meetings and all these different things, when if it was just followed a process and wasn't allowed to be done by resolution, something as important as this, we wouldn't have to be trying to figure out what happened, why did it happen, what do we do about it now, because we would have a good process set up in the ordinance. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Mr. Chair, I just want to, and just inject a little bit of disclosure and discovery for the planning commission. The staff didn't arbitrarily remove the TBBA suggestions and recommendations that were in the original draft. We were, we, we had vetted it with our Board of County Commissioners, and it was requested that we remove these items, and I understand that there maybe have not been appropriate dialogue about it and allowing the TBBA to lobby for their position, and I, I regret that. And I, and I apologize to everyone.
The only point I'm going to make, I'm not saying I agree or disagree with Barbara, but, um, what I do agree, disagree with her a little bit on is the code right now says they will be adopted by resolution. I mean, so that, that's, the issue is that the code is somewhat inconsistent, because it says it'll be adopted by resolution, but then includes the fees. So, the code is sort of internally inconsistent today. Now, I, I think Barbara's arguing that you should err on the side of not allowing them to be adopted by resolution, just put all the fees in, but the existing code is, is sort of a mix of the two. That's the problem.
Couldn't you get rid of the, saying they'd be adopted by resolution portion?
You could. I'm just saying, I don't know that, that's also changing, they could be adopted in the code. I'm not saying, I'm not opining one way or the other. I'm only saying that the existing code does say they will be adopted by resolution, and that's how they were originally adopted, these fees. They were adopted by resolution. At some point after that, somebody decided to put them in the code, too. I don't know how, how it happened, but they got put in the code, too. But even when they were put in the code, it says they'll be adopted by resolution. So, the fees were originally adopted by resolution. That's, that's a fact. I don't think Barbara can disagree with me. That's how they were originally were adopted. She worked on that resolution when it was adopted, so she can't deny it now because she was heavily involved in that.
It was in 2005.
Yes. So, so at one point, she blessed this being adopted by resolution. She won't admit it now, but she did. Okay. Okay. So, that has been the historical way they've been adopted, is by resolution. I'm not saying that can't change, but
Gotcha.
That's, that's the history.
Okay, is there anybody else here to speak? Great, back to us. Anything else from up here? Or a motion?
I'd move that we continue this to the planning commission here in Newport Ritchie a month from now in order to at least let that meeting take place with TBTH, or TBBA, rather.
Okay, so that'll be the September 18th?
18th, yeah.
So, I just want to clarify the purpose of the motion or the intent. So, are you, are you wanting to make sure a meeting took place, or are you wanting to see a revised resolution? I'm not sure what you're-
The intent's to make sure that the stakeholders have their voices heard, and then, you know, and then we can, yeah, we can review the, the outcome of that meeting when we're making an opinion on, on this in a month.
I, I do recall the planning commission had asked us to look at other pure counties, and I, I believe, are we done with that?
We're still in the process of looking at Alachua.
Yeah, so you don't even have all the information that you requested at the last meeting. We're, we're looking at, what, which county? Alachua?
Alachua.
Alachua.
Are you talking about the fee issue or on the larger amendment to the-
That was on the-
Larger amendment.
Oh, the, the larger amendment, excuse me, I thought it was the fees also.
I don't think you're, they're waiting on any additional information related to fees. Well, let me ask the question a different way. When it comes back in a month, are you expecting staff to bring you a revised resolution? Because I know you all raised the issue of grandfathering. Regardless of what the board decides to do on the fee amounts, you all raised the issue of grandfathering. Are you wanting staff to bring this back with language related to grandfathering? Or are you letting that sort of play out in terms of whatever happens with TBBA at that meeting?
For me, for the purposes of making a motion, I think I'd be fine with that. I just want to have them give an oppo- I want them to have an opportunity to be able to, to speak on it at that meeting. So if they're, if they're fine with the, the fees as written without any kind of grandfather language, then I guess I'm fine with it, too. But ultimately, we should, they should be heard.
All I'm saying is if you are, if anybody in this planning commission is expecting staff to bring back a different version of the ordinance, you probably need to help provide that direction now, because right now, the motion is basically saying, bringing it back as is, as long as this meeting occurs. I just want to make sure that's the direction.
Well, it seems to me that we were all interested in a grandfather clause, as was the TD, TBBA.
Okay.
I can show what the language would currently look like right now. So essentially, it strikes through all the references to the fees in Section 802.3C1B3A to D. And then it removes the references to the purpose and authorized locations in Section 802.3E. That's the extent of the proposed amendments with this item.
Right, but currently, it does not address the effective date of the new fees.
Correct.
Now, that could either be dealt with in the resolution or it could be dealt with in the amendment to the code. I, I'm really just asking, and we can figure out where that goes. I'm, I'm really just asking, are you expecting staff to draft grandfathering language before this comes back to you in a month?
Yeah, I mean, I think we all like, would like to see that of some sort, or at least, at least get feedback from the stakeholders regarding that.
Or incorporate language that's either suggested or agreed to at this meeting with TBBA, right?
Right.
I mean, I, again, I personally, I'm, I, I, I can't support getting rid of this out of the ordinance and modifying the ordinance. So, I mean, I, I agree with, and I'm fine with moving it down to the next two meetings from now after the TBBA meeting, but I, I just think we set a bad precedent by proving these fees as part of that resolution and the way it got approved. I don't like the language in it, and, and I don't like how the process happened, personally.
Mr. Chair, may, may I suggest we'll have the meeting with Chair Starkey and the TBBA. Bring it back in 9/18. We'll either have, have satisfied the TBBA. If not, we'll report back to you. And you can act as you see fit, whether you're not going to recommend it or, or you would.
Gotcha.
How's that?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Could, could that exercise also explore how we get the issue resolved, that we're now doing it by resolution rather than in the ordinance? If there's a way to do that in this process? I don't know that there is.
Might be something to bring up to Chairman Starkey.
Well, it's, it's, it's actually a legal issue in this case, because the ordinance is very specific as to how these fees should be increased or modified.
Well, it currently says they're going to be done by resolution. It didn't, I mean. Could that be changed to say it'll, that, that, could that language be struck and then you put all the fees in the ordinance? Yes, it could. I don't know that it's illegal. It's more of a policy issue than a legal issue.
Well, I-
Legal issue is that, was that we gave the opinion that in the absence of this amendment, you could not have the ordinance, the ordinance fees take effect. But could the ordinance be changed so that you don't adopt it by resolution? Yes, you could. That's a policy issue.
All right. Well, I, I'll raise that with the, with the chair. I mean, the TBBA is more interested in getting these fee issues resolved.
Right.
But we, I will speak to her about it when we meet and see if she's-
I mean, in theory, the resolution could have had grandfathering, and the resolution could have had phases in. I mean, the resolution could have done all the things that TBBA wanted. So I think it's, it's probably two problems here.
Right.
One is that we adopted a resolution that was inconsistent with some of the requests that TBBA made. The second is that it was done sort of outside the normal ordinance process.
Right. Okay.
Well, priority one is to address the TBBA's concerns, and that, that's what I'll be doing. I will mention to the chair that there was a process discussion, and maybe the planning commission would make a recommendation to the board to, to, to change the process, and then we could bring that forth.
Well.
Well, I mean, I, I don't think anybody up here is opposed to the, to changes to the fees. I think everybody up here acknowledged that the fees were, I mean, we all wish we could pay 2005 fees on everything we do. But we, we can't. It's reality. It's just the, I mean, I, I heard TBBA, they came in here, they, they had problems with the no grandfathering or the phasing in. They had problems with the elimination of the, of the maximums. So, I mean, I think those are real issues that didn't get addressed in the resolution, so.
And not taking sides. The, the flip side was add was, well, they've been getting away with low fees for 10 years or something, and
Sure.
You know, that, we're, we're hearing it from all sides here.
But it's, it's not fair to change the rules in the middle of the game, either. I mean, grandfathering should definitely at least be considered.
By the way, I don't, I don't want to put too much weight on this resolution versus ordinance issue, because in theory, if this language said, established by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners based on a recommendation from the planning commission, it would go through the same process.
Right.
So it still, still could be by resolution. You could just have it go to the planning commission first.
That's right.
The issue was that that resolution didn't go to the planning commission and didn't do all the things that an ordinance would do.
Okay. All right, there's a motion to continue. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Motion, a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I think that's everything on the regular agenda, correct? So
That's the remainder of the agenda for today.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Move to the workshop?
Then, yeah. We can take, take a recess, and then we'll move on to the workshop. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Anybody want some chums?
Yes.
All right. Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission Workshop of August 21st, 2025. I'd like to remind everyone, please silence all electronic devices. And for those who attended virtually, please mute your microphones while not speaking. Okay. I think on today's workshop agenda, we only have one item, that's the Pasco Conserves element.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Niktarius Pitoz, Planning Development Economic Growth. Today's Local Planning Agency Conference of Plan Updates session will focus on the Pasco 2050 chapter, Pasco Conserves, which is the conservation element. This chapter, like all the chapters of the Conference of Plan, have been worked on by numerous industry-related stakeholders, the county attorney's office, and county departments, including, in this case, by the Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Department, which was a significant participant and contributor in the development of the chapter. In addition to this, the Planning Development Economic Growth Department facilitated the reviews for Parks Recreation and Natural Resources and industry-related stakeholders in order to capture their input and facilitate the development of the chat, of the draft. Moreover, it bears noting that we received significant community stakeholder feedback on the question of natural resource and conservation needs within the county through the through thousands of public comments and surveys via the Pasco 2050 project website, as well as over 10 community workshops and open houses across the county over the last two years. We're presenting the Pasco Conserves chapter today, though, like before, our plan is not to go necessarily line by line through the chapter, but to present the big ideas for the chapter and provide you all with an overview of new policies that were added to the proposed comprehensive plan update, and in this case, an overview of some of the deleted policies because they were either completed, made obsolete by state law changes, or were no longer necessary. With me today is Hyatt Mizili. She's the Senior Planner with Planning Services and the Project Manager for the Comprehensive Plan Update. She'll walk us through the chapter overview. You should have received in your materials the draft chapter, a redline version of it, which shows all the different changes, and the policy change tables that illustrate the various edits made in Pasco 2050. So in that table, you can see what's an absolutely new policy, what is a modified policy, what is a deleted policy. And that's compared against the current comprehensive plan document. And the data and analysis for this chapter has also been provided, which supports the goals, objectives, and policies of the proposed chapter. So if there are any questions or comments at the end of the presentation, will be available for discussion, as well as our counterparts in the Parks Recreation Natural Resources Department. With that, I'll turn it over to Hyatt.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. Hyatt Mizili, Planning, Development, and Economic Growth. As you know, Pasco 2050 is comprised of 11 chapters, each addressing a key topic that guides our county's future growth and development. On this slide, you can see the full list of the chapters, ranging from land use, public facilities, housing, to recreation, open space, and natural resources. And speaking of natural resources, like Terry has mentioned, this afternoon, we will be discussing the conservation element, or the Pasco Conserves chapter, which is chapter number seven on our list here. So I will begin with an overview of the proposed amendments to this chapter, and then we will open the floor for your questions and feedback. We also have with us today staff from the Natural Resources Department, who will be assisting us with answering your questions. They have been very instrumental in reviewing and updating this chapter. Okay, let's roll into the next slide and take a closer look at Pasco Conserves. The conservation element of the existing comprehensive plan was renamed Conserves. This chapter is required per Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes, and the purpose of Pasco Conserves is to ensure that we continue to identify and protect Pasco County's significant natural resources, such as water resources, air quality, land resources, and our conservation lands. This chapter also provides the framework for how the county manages these resources while still accommodating growth and all while preserving our environmental integrity. So what has changed in this chapter? We have streamlined and reorganized the goals, objectives, and policies. The chapter now has two goals, nine objectives, two of which are brand-new, and 67 policies, 12 of those being new as well. These goals, objectives, and policies also incorporate recommendations from the Habitat Study, including Ecological Planning Units and the Agricultural Reserve, which helps support open space protections. We also made edits per statutory requirements, removed policies that already exist in the Land Development Code, updated outdated information, and rewrote policies to be more concise and clear. And of course, there is some renumbering and retitling of policies to fit the reorganization. Overall, these updates make Pasco Conserves easier to navigate, more consistent, and better aligned with state requirements, the county's strategic plan, and the overall county's long-term goals. This slide highlights the new objectives and policies we are proposing in the Pasco Conserves chapter. Thank you. These policies are crafted to protect and enhance our natural resources while balancing future growth. We have policies focused on land and ecological conservation. For example, Policy Conserves 1.1.1 emphasizes on linking natural areas, while Policy 1.1.8 focuses on tree preservation. Policy 1.6.18 is another new policy that addresses reducing nutrient loads in surface waters. We also introduced a new objective, 1.3, that includes policies pertaining to Ecological Planning Units and the Agricultural Reserve. On the water and marine management side, we added Objective 1.8, which lays out a comprehensive approach to assuareen and marine habitat management. And next, we have this slide that shows how the goals, objectives, and policies of Pasco Conserves directly reflect the community's vision, especially around the vision theme of natural resource preservation. The community told us loud and clear that protecting waters, wildlife, and natural system is a priority, and in response, we have strengthened policy language to reflect that priority. For example, there are several policies in Objective Conserves 1.1 that include policies related to protection of listed species, manatee protection, protection of existing conservation lands, tree preservation, and public education on conservation. Objective Conserves 1.2 is all about ecological corridors, their protection, mapping of the ecological corridors, the permitted uses and development standards, and environmental management plans. We also have Objective 1.5, or Objective Conserves 1.5, which is about wetlands and surface water protections, how we regulate wetland impacts, wetland mitigation and preservation, upland buffers and river setbacks, and infrastructure planning to minimize impacts of the wetlands or on the wetlands. And then we have Objective Conserves 1.6, which is all about groundwater protection and water quality. All in all, we are carrying forward the community's priorities into actionable policies that will guide growth while protecting what makes Pasco County unique, and that is open spaces and vibrant places. This concludes my overview of the Pasco Conserves update. Now it's your turn. Let the discussion begin.
I can just start because I have a question. I know Keith knows I'm going to ask him, so. So Keith, let's start with what. Okay. You and I both know the history of what we got through on ecological corridors. So my question to you is, what is your intent as it relates to EPUs and agricultural reserves in terms of their acquisition? Like, what is, in your mind, the mapped areas for EPUs and agricultural reserves? What is the intent of that map?
So.
Maybe we can pull up the maps.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to pull that up. So Keith Wiley, Director of Parks Recreation Natural Resources Department. Mr. Goldstein, the purpose of this was, is kind of flows from the open space conversations that we've been having through the 2050 process. And our contribution to that discussion countywide in terms of, does the county want to revisit requiring open space requirements within master planned developments? And if so, where would we start creating a list of spaces that makes sense for us to target technically? And so we felt that, well, what better place focusing on natural resources protection than areas that were already identified in a previous study and that already existed in the comprehensive plan that were identified as environmentally sensitive, such as the Ecological Planning Units and the Ag Reserve? So really, the purpose of this, and maybe the execution wasn't exactly what we needed to nail down, but the purpose was to identify these areas as eligible spaces that we would, if we were going to move forward with an open space requirement, our recommendation is we start here. So, you know, back up to a development application, development application comes in. If the county decides ultimately that we're going to have some kind of open space requirement, whatever the percentage would be, it used to be 40% when I first joined Pasco County 15 years ago, we would say, okay, this is the area in the county that makes sense that we would probably want to use one of those spaces. Not entirely, not 100%, just an opportunity to visit a section that deserves protection because of its environmental significance. So that was, I don't know if I clearly answered that, David, but that was my, I think, the team's intent.
So two questions. One is, so, so these are not areas that you would be looking to acquire with ELAMP funds?
I would say that they've already been identified as areas significant enough to, that if a willing seller was interested, we would, we would look at that. But through that program, it's, I mean, we look at parcels or properties that are nominated that don't even fall within the EPUs that have environmental significance. So it wasn't an add-on to the existing program, if that's at the root of your question. I would argue that these areas have already been identified as environmentally significant for the most part. Now, since 2002, a lot of things have happened, a lot of development has occurred, and maybe possibly that the shapes in the polygon should be modified, but, you know, in an effort to kind of get this on the books, this is what we have so far.
Well, I guess I have two questions slash concerns. One is, well, that's why I asked you, do you intend to acquire them? Do you have enough money to, if you project out Penny for Pasco, do you have enough money to acquire the ecolog- because you're sort of legally obligated to acquire the ecological corridors. You don't really have a choice because those are regulated.
I'm familiar.
Do you have enough money to acquire the ecological corridors and some of this land that is mapped?
It would be difficult to answer that, David, because, I mean, even if we identified all the acreage in the ecological corridors, we don't know if a property owner would want to keep some, all, you know, I mean, it's tough. I think, you know, I don't think that I would be able to answer that question because I don't really know what the future would hold. Even if you said, okay, 7,000 acres or 4,500 acres are remaining in the ecological corridor, and you did some rough math on $200,000 per acre, you know, based on the future projections of revenue, yeah, it could be tight, right? But that's not, it's not the purpose of this exercise. The purpose of this exercise is getting back to the open space piece. Wouldn't we want to make an attempt to protect areas that we know are environmentally significant versus just some random corner of a development that makes no sense? That's what we were trying to accomplish here.
Yeah, but I'm trying to figure out what that means in practice.
Let me, let me, so I do, so when we worked on this, we never intended the ELAMP funding to have anything to do with this action. This was something that would be negotiated through the development action if the county was interested in establishing an open space requirement. And then we would have incentives.
So I'll ask, I'll ask you and Mr. Petos a hypothetical to maybe help answer my question. So if a land use amendment comes in, a proposed land use amendment to increase density, and it's in the area labeled Agricultural Reserve, is there, is, can somebody argue that they don't, they're not entitled to a density increase because it's labeled Agricultural Reserve?
I don't think that's our intent.
The reason, the reason I'm saying this is because, the reason it's important is because for ecological corridors, we did do that. I mean, we came in and we said, you will not get a density increase in an ecological corridor, and therefore, we had to compensate for that.
Right. And again, David, that's not what we're trying to do here. We're trying to basically say that, and keep shifting back to the open space piece, which quite honestly, has been a challenge to identify. I think if you were to define all of the eligible uses within open space, what I'm recommending is that we look here first. That, again, doesn't have to be 100% of whatever the area is. It could be whatever, whatever the LDC ultimately ends up being. But what I don't want to do, and I think Mr. Moody was in a, we had some stakeholder meetings. What I don't want to do is we create an open space requirement, and we're just creating, we're setting aside open space that doesn't mean anything or has no value. And this was an effort for us to really make it make a point.
This map, the intent of this map is that there are areas where we may at some point in the future do additional regulations?
If that's what the county chooses to do. So it's a planning tool. So like, what I don't want to do is go through another study, and we're trying to figure out what should we.
To Elizabeth, my problem with saying it's a planning tool is, in my mind, that also means a future land use amendment, which is a plan amendment, a plan, okay? That it can be used to deny a plan amendment. So you say it's a planning tool. Well, tell me, where would I find language that says it's not going to be used for that purpose? Mr. Petos, anybody?
I mean, Terry Petos, Niktaros Petos, Planning, Development, Economic Growth. The idea from a future land use, increase in density or intensity or development potential is to primarily look at the future land use to govern that information. My understanding of the agricultural reserve was that it merely established a target area of where policy could be affected. It doesn't necessarily say that every, it doesn't extract entitlement, let's call it, or subtract entitlement, maybe is a better way to say it. It doesn't subtract entitlement, it's just establishing a target area. To the extent that the map could be adjusted, the map could be adjusted. But, but our analysis from a land use change perspective or zoning perspective would discuss, based on the merits of future land use and zoning.
Well, I don't want to disagree with you, Terry, but I think the law requires that you evaluate consistency with the entire comp plan. I don't think you can just isolate the future land use element and say it's only consistent. I don't know that you can ignore the conservation element when you're evaluating consistency with your comp plan.
No, and I'm not saying that we would ignore it, but I didn't quite look at it as a quote-unquote "planning tool." I just looked at it as, and within this target area, the county may have a number of targets that they would potentially acquire through market means, essentially.
Okay, well, now you and Keith are saying different things, and so that's why we're having this conversation.
I have a different understanding of that.
Because if it's a, if it's a future land acquisition tool, you know, sort of through voluntary acquisition, that's a different purpose than, that's why I'm at, this is how, is why I asked, what is the purpose of this map?
Yeah.
Because I don't, it's not clear to me from the text.
Understood. Well, I mean, we were, we would be open to suggestions, the language that helps us meet the intent, to utilize it as a, as a planning tool to address what I've just described, trying to find open space criteria that makes sense, and that it may not even actually happen. But, so yeah, to be clear, our intent is not to add another layer on a map that we're going to deny an application in the future. That was not the purpose or the intent of what we were trying to achieve. So. And my concern, my concern about not mapping it, quite honestly, is, you know, eventually, I'm going to retire, maybe sooner than later, depending on how this goes, but, you know, and it's a good reference. It's a good point, you know, it makes sense for someone to see it. I'm, I think the team is okay with describing this narratively in a paragraph, too. But I'm telling you that there's lots of discussions about open space that I have, both with the board members and just residents. And I think Hyatt pointed this very clearly, the residents are concerned about this, so this, this is just our.
What you're telling me is that we need a policy that says that we will consider future amendments to the Land Development Code that provide increased protection to these areas. Is that accurate to what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that if and when the county decides to establish an open space requirement, this is where we should look first. That's all, that's basically all we're trying to.
So you would want it to say something like, in the event the county adopts additional open space requirements, these should be the target areas for those requirements?
Can you do everybody a favor?
Yeah.
Open space means different things to different people. Can you tell us what your intent is for what is open space?
Just had this debate or discussion with one of the county attorneys a little bit ago. So it could mean lots of things, Mr. Moody. It could be civic space. It could be, actually, we were just working on a project a couple of days ago. It's, it's basically anything that could be usable, right? That it could be a neighborhood park, it could be conservation land, it could be all cement in some cases. This is why I'm concerned about this definition not being nailed down, but all of it is useful. It could be a community hub. And what I'm suggesting about these areas specifically is of all the things that open space slash civic space, community hub space could end up being. community hub space could end up being, living somewhere in a future development design, that these areas should fall in there somewhere. That's, that's all I'm suggesting. And that let's not go make an arbitrary claim to set aside something that doesn't have an environmental benefit underneath that definition of open space, when you have a very clearly targeted area or areas in the county that make sense.
Let me ask the question a different way.
Yeah.
In the areas that are white, okay, I guess they're not high priority for your, for you.
Yeah.
Are you basically saying that our neighborhood park regulations are enough, effectively enough open space in those areas?
I'm saying that in that case, that might be the, a suitable, you know, eligible criteria to satisfy open space. You might need nothing else other than that. But I would also argue, and I'm not a planner, so any of the planners can hop up here and help me. In an urban environment, you might focus more on civic space or a community hub. I'm saying that in an area where you have, you know, these, I, these, these zones already identified, and you have an open space, and if the county agrees that of all the things an open space definition could include, this, these, these areas really should be included.
So what I'm really asking is if the, if there was text that went with this map that said, Pasco County shall consider additional open space requirements in the EPUs and agricultural reserve areas depicted on this map, does that achieve your goal?
I think so. If, if the county as a whole agrees that open space is something that they would want to see holistically.
First, I'm just trying to see what you're trying to achieve, because I couldn't tell from the text or the map. So you're trying to achieve that these are areas where we might look at doing additional open space requirements, and to Mr. Moody's point, in theory, if it's a future land development regulation, that could define what we mean by that. But you're looking for just a general policy objective that
That forces us.
That maybe our existing open space regulations are insufficient in these areas.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay, then what are you?
I'm sorry, and maybe we're, we're missing each other. I apologize, David. But I just keep going back to what I'm being told is the overall goal of establishing some form of open space requirement. All I'm suggesting, and will continue to suggest, is that when an, an application intersects with these areas, instead of requiring, maybe instead of requiring neighborhood parks, right, David, in those areas, maybe we allow a set aside of these areas that both can be used as a, active space. Maybe you waive the neighborhood park piece, or maybe you have a combination of, you have an all standard against neighborhood park, you do less neighborhood park because you're setting aside more environmentally sensitive area, and they all meet the future open space requirement.
And so for agricultural reserve, are you, are you considering open space to be any area where there's not? And if it's farmland, do you consider that open space?
No, no, not, I mean, I, so my opinion of open spaces would be post, it's, it's in the built environment, I think is how I'm trying to, you know, and the team is trying to envision open space. So I would say that in the ag reserve where you have, uh, uh, both agricultural property and impacted property, you also have stands of, of, of natural plant communities that maybe, you know, kind of makes sense to include into this open space piece. If there is a standing requirement, I'm not looking to create an open space requirement just for the EPUs and the ag reserves. That's not the goal. We, we were under the impression that organizationally, we were pursuing an open space requirement. So I'm trying to contribute to what that would actually, you know, what would actually be included in that, not, not created.
You're saying, I'm asking you, are you considering these to be the target areas for, where you'd either have some additional or alternative open space requirements?
Yes. That's under the assumption, David, that we would have an open space requirement for MPUDs or future planned development, yes.
But the presumption would be that you wouldn't necessarily have alternative or heightened open space requirements in the white areas?
Correct. I think, I think those, again, so let's, let's go back to the old forty percent ratio that we used to have, right? That's what it used to be. In the, in those white areas, it might, it wouldn't be these things. It would be a neighborhood park requirement, or it would be civic space or community hubs. This is different, is all I'm saying. Different focus because you're in a different part of the county, and you, again, we should, we should focus on areas that are telling us that should be protected and conserved.
And I'm allowed to publicly speak to it, too, in the planning commission, but I, to me, in my opinion, number one, you need a statement that makes it clear this is not regulatory, not a regulatory map for purposes of any land development proposal.
Right.
Because just saying for planning purposes only, in my opinion, doesn't cure it, because planning purposes includes land development, okay? And then secondly, I think you need a very clear statement as to what its purpose is, and if the purpose is solely to, for us, when we're considering future amendments to the Land Development Code, that these would be the target areas for either alternative or heightened open space requirements, I think the text of the comp plan needs to say that. I didn't see anywhere where it says any of those things currently.
No, yeah, I think you're correct. We were, yeah, we were attempting to just, maybe the planning tool reference was, was not the correct terminology.
To add to that, David, too, I think we need to better define open space.
Yes, we would love that.
I'm open.
Because it's really hard to, you know, set, set aside, say, this, this should be for future.
I'm particularly concerned as really to the agricultural reserve, because one could argue the farmland is open space.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that either.
Especially if your intent is to preserve its agricultural nature.
I think our intent of this, again, the intent, at least of all the staff I've talked to that are talking about this requirement, is to make sure that the, the future end product has these community hubs within it and open space elements, and it's just not wall-to-wall units. And to try to use that as a planning tool and then incentivize it, that's, that's, that's what we're trying to get at.
I'd say in addition to what David's suggesting, is that there's some areas on the map that are, that are shaded, that are fairly planned intense areas, you know, fifty, Aaron cut off over to Bellamy Brothers, for example. So I understand what you're saying. It's not the intent of a, to be a planning tool, but, uh, I mean, that, that proposed development's already there. So, I mean, the, the overlaying of, of, you know, whatever that is, agricultural reserve on that area doesn't really, is not Congress with, what's, what's already planned in that area.
Yeah, or what's approved by the board, true. That's what I'm saying.
I mean, presumably, my two suggestions probably would cure that issue, because if it's not regulatory today, and that it's only a, a potential tool for a future regulation, you could exempt anything grandfather.
True.
Anything that predates it as the time you do that regulation.
But if we know those areas now, why wouldn't we just kind of take that layer out from?
I'm not saying I disagree with you, but.
Because you know people are going to look at this map, and it's going to become a planning tool.
You take those areas out, out of the map?
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to them being taken out. I want to be clear. I'm just saying that if it's not regulatory, I'm not sure it makes a legal difference, but, but.
My question for you is, how does this interact with some of the existing stuff that we have? For instance, the northeast rural protection overlay? You know, because that, that covers a lot of the same ground of some of the agricultural reserve and with Lakucha River.
Well, again, I mean, I think, not too familiar with that specifically, but I'm sure it could be compatible. We wouldn't want to add, again, the goal is not to add on top of something. So if there is an open space element or some kind of planning tool that is referencing that or implying that, then this could be used in its place.
Yeah, I mean, it defines rural character.
Yeah.
You know, for that particular overlay, which, again, some may define that as open space.
Right.
Right? But we won't know until we have that definition, I guess, but.
I think that's a fantastic statement. A, a clear definition on open space would be wonderful.
So what's in the way of handling it?
What's in the way? I think everything we've just discussed. And also, you know, is this civic space? Are they community hubs? Are they neighborhood parks? It's, that's.
Talk about procedure.
Good afternoon, Elizabeth Blair, Pasco County Attorney's Office. Um, yeah, we've had this conversation a couple of times in, just amongst our staff. I've spoken with Terry and some of his folks. I spoke with Keith this morning. I've spoke with some of Keith's people previously. And we recognize that this open space thing is quite confusing, means many things to many different people. And I think maybe the approach is possible, that the one that I've advocated for is thinking of an, an umbrella of open space. And then you've got different segments of what that open space is and what it means in a different context. Everything from an urban, suburban, and a rural open space. And then you start talking about natural lands, environmental lands, all these different words that you think mean something different, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. And really looking at those definitions and drilling down in the context of what the development is going to be or what, what it looks like there. So you have civic centers in your urban area. When you think of a civic area, you think of, you know, cement, you think of something that's not your open space in a rural context. So we recognize that this is a problem, so having the umbrella term drilling down in different categories is what I'm hoping we end up doing, and I think it's going to take some brain power to get there.
So with that, if I hear you, we can have open space in an urban context. What's that have to do with this map?
Nothing.
Because you're identifying all the non-urban areas.
Exactly, exactly. So, so you end up with these different places that have different uniqueness to them. And I'm not as familiar with what staff's thought process was for open space in these areas. I'm learning as Keith talked and his folks were talking with me this morning. But I think that having this division in different categories will really go a long way in, you know, getting to where we want to go. This is just one of the categories, yeah.
And right now, it's, these may not be urban areas, but let's not say that couldn't be an urban area at some point in the future in one of these areas.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't even like our existing open space definitions, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there is an open space definition in the comprehensive plan now. Well, go ahead and read it to us.
It's very confusing and very long.
It's very lengthy.
Uh, open space, undeveloped land or water body which is free of structures and equipment except that incidental to the land's open space uses. For urban land use classifications, which include residential land use classifications, non-residential land use classifications, and mixed-use land use classifications, open space is a common area under common ownership that may include the following: flood protection, creating a sense of spatial separation for incompatible land uses, areas for agricultural operations, passive recreation, active recreation, conservation uses, not otherwise defined in this glossary, and historical and archaeological sites. For the rural land use classifications, open space can be of any size, treed or open grassland. Functions include the providing of flood production, creating a sense of spatial separation for incompatible land uses, provision of passive recreation, active recreation or conservation uses, historical site preservation, and areas for agricultural operations. For the RES 1, residential one dwelling per gross acre, land use classification, which is classified as both residential land use classification and a rural land use classification when such land is developed as estate lots, one acre or greater in size, or is an MPUD master plan unit development under policy FLU 1.14, it shall be classified as rural land use classification for the purposes of this definition. When such RES 1 is developed as a cluster residential or split division MPUD master plan development under special provision A, the RES 1 land use classification definition, it shall be classified as a residential land use classification for the purposes of the definition. That's, that's it.
Thanks for clarifying.
Crystal.
Let me, let me just ask it this way. When Hyatt was up, giving the presentation, says the public wants open space. Well, what is it, what, what is it that staff perceives the public wants?
I, I mean, honestly, I really feel like that should be answered by the planning team, but, you know, from my perspective, you know, when you look at, um, the, the old citizen surveys, it's, it's a loss of, I'll let you speak, but I mean, just from, from my perspective, it's a loss of natural areas. But fully understanding that open space can mean lots of things, that's why I think Elizabeth's recommendation to have categories does make sense. But I think the perceived issue is just loss of, of natural areas necessarily that provide that open space feeling. So, I don't know if I.
I think that question is answered contextually across the county. On the east side of the county, open space is going to generally mean long view sheds across, it can include the agricultural activities that are happening on large properties, uh, the ability to see far away and to be moving between structures and places over a distance. Universe, on the west side of the county, it can be as, as, as specific to how large people's front yards or backyards are in those more urban settings. Universally, I think most people consider open space the natural areas. And also included with that, in terms of layman's perception of how they move through the world, parks, detention facilities, uh, even well-manicured, can I say, parking lots can often be considered open space to people because it's, it's not, in their minds, buildings all upon each other, you're not in the city, quote-unquote. So it's, there's a, there's a number of contextual definitions, which our current comprehensive plan is trying to reach for those contextual definitions. And I think Elizabeth is right, that there probably should be an umbrella term. And then underneath that umbrella term, identify the, the diverse understandings of open space.
So getting back to what is Keith's area, this map, which, which version of open space was he trying to achieve in these mapped areas?
I think I can clearly answer that, David. So it would be the natural environment or the view shed piece of, of an agricultural piece of property. I think that's, as, as, as an option.
In your mind, a farm with crops would be open space?
Yes, yeah. Or, or the, or whatever that creates for someone as openness in a, in a view shed.
Yeah, I, I can't speak for every citizen in the county that's wanting open spaces, but I can speak for myself. And me just as a citizen would think that an open space means no development, or no more development than what's going on, than what's already existing. So, you know, I, I think you'd be hard pressed to, for someone to say that an open space is considered a parking lot in, on 19. You know, I don't think that, that would fit the definition of most people's idea of.
Well-manicured parking lot, just for clarification.
Well, if it's well-medicured, in that case.
That's it.
So I, yeah, I think, I think that's really what the public is looking for.
Is this solar farm?
I'd be willing to bet.
Is a solar farm open space?
I was just about to ask the same question.
If you're the expert in open space, is a solar farm open space?
I, I, I preceded this with saying that I can't speak for everyone. I can speak for myself. In, in my, in my opinion, a solar farm would probably be considered open space, yeah. Because that's the only, that's the only use of the property. There's no, there's no just additional congestion. There's.
I would tell you that the people of the northeast rural area have a different opinion.
Yeah, yeah, but that's just me.
Well, let's say you're adopting a law saying we have to allow them in agricultural areas, so. And we are following that law, Mr. Moody.
Yeah, I mean, I, what I'd rather see cows on rolling, rolling pasture, yeah, than, than a solar farm, yes. But I think a solar farm doesn't add traffic or, you know, create the congestion and stuff that people bring up as an issue.
Good news is we're starting to think differently about that technology in Washington DC these days.
Well, I mean, there's also wind farms. I mean, there's, there's other things that happen.
Like I said, the good news is we're starting to think differently about that.
So, but to getting back to your original question, then, so you'd be okay if this was revised to say that, that, I mean, we're, we're going to consider some future changes to our regulations regarding open space in these targeted areas?
Or that these targeted areas could meet the future definition of, of an open space category. That's, I mean.
Just to ask you a question, put yourself in the position of somebody who owns a piece of property out there, and you guys are coming in here telling me you're targeting my property. Okay, who are you to target my property?
I don't think that's.
You've decided what you're going to do with my property. Nobody elected you to decide what you're doing with my property. Okay? I question the value of having such a map whatsoever. Nobody can come in here and give us a clear explanation of what this map is for, what its purpose and intent is, can't even define what open space is, and we've just spent how many minutes now discussing this map that nobody can have, nobody has a logical explanation or simple explanation for what it is. My suggestion would be get it out of here.
Well, with all due respect, Mr. Moody, I feel like I, I feel like I did attempt to at least try to describe what the purpose is, and I also said that maybe our execution wasn't perfect, but, um, anyway. I appreciate the discussion, and I'm open, obviously, to maybe modify, oh, Terry's standing behind me. Modifying the. Modifying the, the definition is Terry and I were just having a sidebar conversation to talk, to, you know, maybe capture what Ms. Blair had discussed.
Are, are you ready to retire yet?
Until we figure this out.
Well, I mean, I don't agree with everything that Mr. Moody says. The difference with ecological corridors is we were very clear what their purpose was. And we, yes, they were targeted, but we agreed to compensate because we targeted. Okay, so that's, I think, the underlying concern here, Keith, is that there's no clear purpose, and it's not clear whether we're going to compensate for that targeting.
I get it.
I, I just want to note on the origin of this map, the, the map is actually, in the current comprehensive plan, as map three dash three in the conservation element. The difference between what's in the current comprehensive plan and this map is merely the, just the agricultural reserve, teal colored shape on the map. Everything else is there, and, and just as the agricultural reserve is added as a shape to, to the, to the map, so too has the updated version of the map included and agricultural reserve in the name. So to the extent, you know, understood, you know, just get rid of it or something like that, it would probably be, I, I would presume that you're referring to the agricultural reserve, not necessarily the whole map.
Well, Terry, I understand what your point, but the reality is we never implemented anything with EPUs. I mean, Keith knows this, the only regulation we adopted, the only regulation we did in any way, shape, or form is ecological corridors. I'm not aware of us ever applying EPUs in any regulatory framework whatsoever.
No, and again, that, you know, listen, let's just agree to maybe kind of continue, I'm fine, obviously, with, if the recommendation of the committee is to, is to remove the map, I don't have an issue with that. What I'm, what I'm suggesting to the planning team and to everyone else that's trying to figure out this open space is let's just not lose sight of these areas as an opportunity to be eligible. That's basically it. And, and my team view this as an opportunity to, again, to contribute to that conversation. If in fact, you know, David, I do respect your legal opinion, if, if you're saying this creates a situation where we're, we're indirectly implying a take, that's not, that's not what we want to do, so.
I'm not saying it does or doesn't. The, the way the language and map are drafted today, I can't say...
That's fair.
I would have difficulty defending it the way it's drafted today. Is there a way to draft it so it's legal? Probably, but for the purpose that you want to use it for, I'm not sure you need it.
Okay.
I mean, I, I mean, the reason I'm saying that is because, my slight concern with it is I'm not even sure it's in the best interest of the county. Let me explain why, okay? Because if you're saying these are our targeted areas for more open space or different form of open space, and someone presumes that we don't want open space in the white areas, you know, and I'm not sure you're saying that either.
I'm not, yeah.
So I don't must be worried about it being used against us and saying, well, why are you doing additional open space in, you know, say, say the county wants to come in and want to do additional open space requirements in the white areas, and somebody says, why are you doing that? It's not even in the mapped areas where you said you were going to want more open space.
Right.
And are the people in the white areas not entitled to more open space?
Yeah, I, I think they are, and I, and I guess...
Well, I mean, he probably showed up at the workshop asking for more open space too, right? So why are they being excluded? I mean, I...
A lot of rural areas in that white spot too, white...
So it just seems to me you're creating the haves and the have-nots for open space.
And to the point, this becomes a planning tool, you know, at, at the end of the day. So it's, yeah, I mean, to John's point, get rid of it.
Well, I'm, that's what I'm saying, I'm not even sure it helps us as a planning tool. That's what I'm trying to say, is, is I, I don't, because it sort of implies that we don't need open space in the white areas.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
We don't know what a future staff is going to come in here and...
How they're going to interpret it.
How they're going to interpret this map and what that means under the, the comp plan. We want to make sure that as this government continues, that there's clear direction going forward as to what these things mean.
So here, here's a, here's a recommendation. I, I think that this came out as a single open space requirement through conserves when we were attempting, again, to contribute to the larger discussion. So what I, what I would recommend is that we withdraw the map, right? And we talk with the planning team of how we have that conversation through this development.
I think you could just do a policy that says the Pasco County shall consider additional context-specific open space requirements.
Yeah, where does that live though, right? And that's, that's not for me to decide.
Because, I mean, because I agree with, the one thing I said that I agree with all of you on is that it is context-specific. It differs depending on where you are.
Right.
So maybe we do need to look at open space based on its context as opposed to, but you could say that in just words without creating a map.
And I agree with you, so. All right. As enjoyable as this has been, I'm sure there's other questions, I hope not, but I'm sure there's...
I think you wanted to have this conversation.
I did, I did. And actually, I think, honestly, it went almost exactly like I thought it would go. Because we really, I think, are struggling on what this ultimately looks at, looks like for, for everything that we discussed already. So, yeah, I think it was a very productive conversation, so.
Okay. I have a, I have a question for you, just from history. Seems to me a few years ago, there was some discussion about wetland, wetland buffers and VOPH versus general wetland buffers. I assume that's been resolved.
It has.
Okay, well, how was that? What's the, is it just whatever the comp plan says is the wetland buffer?
So I think it was a specific, yeah, Chris, I think it was a specific subarea policy that was created for VOPH, and then hence modified to be more in line with standard, standard practices.
Is there like an additional hundred feet, something?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
I was just curious how that worked out.
Yep.
It's effectively a slightly enhanced wetland buffer in VOPH. Is that an accurate description?
Yep, that's correct, yes.
Okay, all right.
So ideas like that could translate to a open space.
Look, that just naturally worked. That's exactly what we were trying to accomplish, so. Any other que...
Yeah, I'll throw another eight-hundred pan gorilla out there, and I'm sure I'm not the only one that has on this dice those questions or comments about it, but the old subject of wetland categorization and the intent of wetland categorization and the need for it with the state regs that are, that are on the, on the books. You know, we essentially defer to the state regs that are on the books. And I, I can see with, with the, you know, the context of a category one wetland may be, but, you know, with, within this planning document, you know, we, we talk about category three wetlands, we essentially defer, shall be authorized, impacts of these areas should be authorized by applicable state and federal agencies. So what, what is the point of even having a category two or category three wetland when we're following 62.340 and 62.345 as far as the authorization impact though? So that's one part of my question. I'm sure my fellow commissioners who are engineers sitting on this dice have similar thoughts, but I just want to open it up.
Just historical.
Oh, wait a second, hold on. I mean, the, we asked for fairness, I mean, a question was asked, and I don't know, do we need to give Keith the opportunity to respond? Because, I mean, I don't know, John, did you want to like elaborate on the question or?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just have one request. If there's a specific policy that you're identifying, if you can just state that policy so that we can be tracking. You on screen?
Exactly, yep. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I was just getting clarification. So it's a valid, valid question, and I think that maybe for transparency purposes, if it just goes away completely, I think that we were trying to build in an exemption, is that, yeah?
Jackie Jordan, Parks Rec Natural Resources Department. So the idea was to kind of change the categories to simplify them a little bit. So whereas twos and threes kind of meant the same thing to the county, threes would now be those exempt ones that the state would historically considered exempt from any requirements, you know, upland cut ponds and things like that. So that was the intent there. In regards to the category two wetlands, one thing that we were trying to add in was in the instance for single-family projects that are not necessarily subject to an ERP, so it might just be a single-family house. DEP has said, and it's, is not subject to ERP, therefore it's not subject to the applicant's handbook. So we're still trying to implement that 15-foot minimum, 25-foot average buffer on those systems, so we can be consistent with what the state would require if an ERP was being sought.
Why?
To ensure that there's no adverse impacts to wetlands and...
States determine that they're not interested in it, why, why do we need to be interested in it?
Because we're finding when we're doing single-family reviews, we're just trying to be consistent.
With what? We're not being consistent with what the state law is. Why do we think we need to have a more rigorous wetland buffer requirement that the state doesn't see fit to apply to a single-family home? Why do I need to burden a homeowner with something, just because you moved to Pasco County? I can move to Hernando County and buy the same single-family lot and not have to worry about this.
I'll take a, I'll take a stab at that. So just a quick history lesson, county was sued back in the early 2000s, and through that lawsuit, several comp plan policies were created. I know Mr. Moody knows this because we, we had the discussion during the stakeholder working group. And through that, that's where the, that's where, and I'm hearing it's not true, but that ultimately, that's the creation of a lot of these policies, including the ELAM program. So I think that it's obviously the will of the board to have their own categories or not. We are attempting to simplify the process, you know, listening to you, Mr. Moody, and other stakeholders, and we thought that's what we accomplished while still maintaining the intent of additional protections in wetlands in Pasco County. That, that's the mission. If the board chooses to have a different mission, then that's the board's decision, so.
Keith, I'm sorry, were you just explaining why we even got into categories for wetlands?
Yes, Mr. Girardi, correct, yes.
And can you repeat that again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so...
Exactly what you said.
Yeah, so the county, and I wasn't here at the time, but it sounds like some people behind me were, the county, the county was sued, and through that lawsuit, several comp plan policies to increase environmental protections were put in the comp plan, okay? One of them was, it was increased wetland protections, environmental lands, listed species. So all these policies basically were created, you know, many, many years ago. What we've heard through working with many, many applicants is we need to attempt to streamline the process. And that's, I think, ultimately what the team's objective was here, was to streamline the process. Mr. Poole, you bring up a good point. If in fact, we're attempting to create the threes as an exemption, maybe they don't need to be in there anymore. That's fine, we don't, we don't have an issue with that.
So the plaintiff in this lawsuit alleged that we were not being protective enough of the wetlands?
That's correct, of many things. And it was in natural resources, it was many, many issues, wetlands...
So even though we were adhering to state law and being as protective as state law required us to be, we were not being protective enough?
Yeah, I'll let maybe someone else that has the history speak to that, but I wasn't a part of the litigation, so.
That, that's what confuses me, and you know, the same thing confuses me to this day, is, you know, we're being more restrictive than Swift Mud state law.
Well, okay, so let me be clear. So whether it was or was not part of some lawsuit to begin with, it doesn't prevent us from amending our comp plan, so I want to be clear about that. So staff and the planning commission need to do whatever is the best policy today. You don't, you're not bound by, all that, even if there was a lawsuit, all it required us to do was amend the comp plan at that point in time. I don't remember whether they dealt with wetlands, my recollection was more about ecological corridors than wetlands, but I'm sure Elizabeth or Barbara can tell us exactly what happened. But even if it did, it didn't stop us from, even if it did say we had to have category one, two, and three wetlands, we can change that now if we want to.
Right.
There's nothing that, somebody would have to challenge that decision as part of this update for that to not happen.
One of the problems I've always had with the categorization of wetlands, it's arbitrary. Somebody, and nobody's been able to tell me this yet, and I've asked the question multiple times at a couple of these stakeholder meetings, what's the difference between a 99.8 acre wetland and a 100.01 acre wetland qualitatively? Nobody can tell me that. It's an arbitrary definition. I might be for more rigorous wetland protection if you can give me some qualitative reason to protect that wetland. And I'm thinking about wetlands definitions. I'm thinking about, Clark, I don't mean to pick on your project, but you got a mine project, and I'm going to come down the road later and I'm going to have 100-plus acres of mine that has an open surface water and qualifies as a wetland in surface water under the state law. Is that, is that something that I'm going to apply rigorous protections to? Look, because it exceeded an area? Or am I more worried about the green swamp on the east side of the county? It's a definition that has no science behind it. Somebody pulled a number out of the air. Like I said, so it's all, it's all okay, I can have, I can use the Swift Mud definition of a wetland buffer if my wetland is 99.9999 acres, that's all good. But I got to have a hard 25, and there's no exceptions. And then I've got to go through an extra burden to make an, to justify an impact to that wetland because it's 100.00001. If someone can give me a qualitative reason, I am absolutely willing to consider why we should apply better protections. But right now, no one's been able to do that.
I, I feel like we've, I mean, for what it's worth, I feel like we have had this discussion, so I, I think you could make a very general statement that the larger the regional, the regionally significant system is.
I just don't feel like why county staff feels like we need to apply more rigorous buffering standards than the Florida Department of Environmental Protection requires.
And I think, Mr. Moody, that's where, I mean, this isn't county staff making this recommendation, we're actually making...
No court imposed this on it, and I agree with Barbara, and I was here back then. I'm the guy who set on the task force to create the ELAM program.
Yeah, okay. We're adhering to the policies as they exist today. As Mr. Goldstein pointed out, if the Board of County Commissioners wants to change the policy, that's, that's under their purview to do that.
Which we can recommend.
Which you can recommend. But I'm not going to sit here and be attacked over a policy that I inherited.
I'm not attacking, I, I don't mean to, and I apologize if it sounds like it's a personal attack, it's not. But I've asked this question multiple times, and what I don't see is staff providing justification not to, you want to maintain this policy, you're adamant in the position that you want to maintain this policy, but you can't provide a justification, why?
I think the justification, John, is that a watershed or a larger system provides better ecosystem services than something that's smaller. I mean, I think if you were to run these through UMAM, you would probably ultimately get the same result.
And that's where I'm trying to get to.
I know, we've had this discussion, yeah.
Thank you. But that UMAM is a qualitative evaluation of a wetland. Doesn't it make more sense to say that if I have a UMAM score of A, B, or C, then maybe this wetland is entitled to better protection than something of the lower UMAM score, other than just the arbitrary acreage requirement? Because acreage isn't going to make the UMAM score.
It could, but...
It affects the score, but it doesn't, it's not make or break of that score.
True, valid point. But I think where you have to be careful is if you, if you step away, what UMAM doesn't do and the state rules don't do necessarily, is they don't look at the cumulative impact of multiple impacts on a large system. And so by standing on principle, saying that the larger system deserves to be, the integrity of that system is important, then you provide greater protection. Because what the, you know, the processes that you're referencing, it'll allow a system to be impacted at multiple lines along its boundary, but there's no cumulative analysis. So maybe the answer to your point is we look at some structure that allows us to do a cumulative analysis on, on regional systems that we know provide a lot of, a lot of benefits to future communities and existing communities. And I think that's, that's at least my team's position of what we're trying to make sure we, we want to avoid that, you know, nickel and diming.
So Keith, are you saying that your team believes that what the state has in place isn't adequately protecting the wetlands?
I mean, I think that we see that, you know, it's, because there is no cumulative or... I mean, I think that we see that, you know, it's, because there is no cumulative requirement, right, to look at a system holistically, it's challenging. And a lot of, a lot of applications come in, and maybe the desire is that if they could do that, that would work, but that's ultimately not what we're seeing. And if you want me to say on the record that I think the state rules are not adequate, I'm not going to say that.
I'm not trying to back, back into the box. I'm just, I mean, I, I've, I've seen situations where projects have, I mean, let's take it all the way back to square one. I mean, we'll go back to, you know, GIS layers identify the wetland as a category two or three. Well, then by the time we get into site plan and down the road, somebody at staff level comes in and says, no, we think that's a category one, so we've got to fight that fight.
Right.
Then we look at that wetland, and that wetland, there's a lot of different characteristics and a lot of different components of that. What's lumped, being all lumped together into one big category one wetland. Some of it's pasture, some of it's wooded. There's all kinds of different components. Do they all have the same value? Should that requirement be placed on them saying, absolutely not unless you're building the road. You're not going to touch any piece of that wetland, and you're going to stay 25 feet away from it. I mean, I, I think there's some key properties in Pasco County that are very important to the development of the county that have that situation. And if this imposition remains in the comp plan, you, you restrict those properties from being developed. And I think that's, that's very, very narrow-minded approach at, at wetlands when you have all these other agencies looking over your shoulder, and, and that, that is, their task is to look at this. I mean, you've got the Corps, you've got DEP, you've got SWF mud. I mean, there's other people that, that look at this topic specifically, and we're going to say, oh, no, we're going to take our staff of five or six people of Pasco County, and we're going to regulate it better than they are. I'm not saying you said that. I'm, I'm just using that as an example. I, I don't agree.
I would argue, I'm confidently saying that local protection provides more protection. I mean, because, you know, it just does. So, but again, you know...
We had a former county administrator here that didn't believe SWF mud was doing its job.
Well, I'm not suggesting that either.
Let me finish, please. And he decided that we would adopt more stringent restrictive stormwater regulations. Okay? And then we just had all of this flooding. So, did our county do better than the state did?
Not a stormwater expert, so I can't speak to that.
Well, Mr. Moody, I will say that most of the areas that were adopted, were built under county and SWF mud regulations did not occur, did not have significant flooding.
I agree with you.
Most of this, most of the flooding occurred in areas that were not built to SWF mud or county standards.
I, I understand that.
So I'm just saying, don't, you shouldn't blame the flooding on...
I'm not blaming the flooding on Pasco County. What I'm saying is, and anybody that knows me and my practice, and I will tell you, the people at SWF mud do a very good job of regulating wetlands and stormwater, and they do it in the most professional of manner and the most consistent of manner. And I think they've got a pretty good track record of demonstrating that the regulation that they do is effective. I can tell you, as somebody who grew up in this area, okay, the water in that Gulf of Mexico out here, when I was a kid, was brown, and the beaches were closed down. Then we got stormwater management regulations, and I got septic tanks off the coast, and I got the people on the coast on sewers. And if you go out there to Ann Cloke Key today, on the ride out from the Fifth Luchescodee out there to the Ann Cloke Key, it's crystal clear, and you can see, and I remember as a kid driving over the Skyway Bridge, and when you drove over that little clunky, big clunky metal bridge that's no longer there, that water in Tampa Bay was brown, and when you drive over it today, it looks like the Emerald Water of the Florida Keys. These regulations work, and those are all courtesy of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and SWF mud. They do a good job. I don't see any need for the duplication of regulation or any further additional regulation. What they are doing works, and you can see it with your own eyes.
Well, long ago, as I think that, you know, there's a statement in your, our policy 1.5.8, if we scroll down to that, that allows us to do alternative wetland protection strategy. I mean, I, I don't see why there was a need to even have that sort of language in the, in the plan.
It's actually a modification to some existing language. We were attempting to clarify what, when there was an impact to category one wetlands. Ironically, there, there was no ability to actually go to a, to a bank. So, you know, that was actually cleaned up, so... That's not what they're talking about?
No, 1.5.8 is analysis of SWF mud, FDPA, and Army Corps wetland protection strategies. Essentially saying that it's, it's, I think it's a different, where's the markup version? I've got the markup version open, too. Yeah, 1.5.7 in the markup version, correct.
Okay, so go ahead. Okay, there you go.
I think Ms. Willhite wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, so that's, that's existing language.
I have one more question before Barbara. I promise it'll be, Keith, can I just, one more question?
Absolutely.
Can you scroll back up to the policy? The talks about, it's related to the buffer. To follow up to Mr. Moody's point, a lesser point. Go back, no, back, you went to the other way. That one. Okay. So, can you explain to me why, first of all, I'm not sure administrative variance is the right, we don't have Patrick here, but I'm not sure that, is that the right deviation term? I thought it was alternative standard or something like that. I don't even know if that's the right. But my bigger point is, why is it that we allow it to be deviated, the 25-foot upland buffer around category wetlands to be deviated, but we didn't, we don't allow the minimum 15 feet, average 25 feet for category two or three? Like, there's no similar deviation ability for, I mean, Mr. Moody's raising a bigger point, which is that we shouldn't have to do this at all. My more technical point is, why are you allowing deviations for some and not others?
I think the, the focus, again, is that the category ones take priority. We're trying to kind of simplify and streamline the process.
Okay, but you're allowing the deviation for category ones, but you're not allowing it for twos and threes.
We can add it to the, the administrative variance that's already existing for the category one.
Yeah, there is, there is a standing administrative variance right now. I think it's up to five, five feet.
Five foot encroachment.
Could we talk about this a little bit bigger?
Well...
What's the purpose of the wetland buffer?
To prevent secondary impacts.
Exactly. What are secondary impacts?
Impacts that occur beyond the primary impact. So it could be erosion, it could be invasive species, yeah, sedimentation.
Okay. And does the Water Management District and the DEP allow me to propose? The way the rules work is I'm presumed to have mitigated for secondary impacts by providing these buffers. I'm not required to provide the buffers. It's just that there's a presumption that I've mitigated for any secondary impacts by providing the buffer. You're free to go into the Water Management District, and I've done this on multiple projects, where we'll say, well, here's what we're going to do to propose to mitigate our secondary impacts rather than providing your buffer. How come we don't have those opportunities in the comp plan?
I think...
I'd say I think it's definitely something that we could talk about.
Yeah. I, I also think that, I don't know if that lives in the comp plan, Mr. Moody. I feel like that would be more of an LDC, like, adjustment.
Well, no, the problem is this is very regulatory in nature, and that you're requiring these buffers.
The problem, Keith, if that was your position, you should have a more general statement in the comp plan about upland buffers.
Okay.
Your upland buffer requirements are very specific in this policy, and it, which I don't think it's in there now. Well, there's the 25, but, when, now, but you added very specific requirements for twos and threes, and you didn't even allow them to be deviated by any variation in Land Development Code.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's something that we could, we can add.
Wouldn't it just be easier to say, and I understand there's a larger issue about whether we should be regulating upland buffer at all, that needs to be resolved by the board, but wouldn't it be easier just to say the county should continue to implement Land Development Code regulations that protect upland buffers, period? I mean, and just deal with, it's in the Land Development Code? Because you're, and I know Barbara probably is going to get up and say, we shouldn't be regulating through the comp plan. Because then you get into how do you deviate from it?
Right.
So, I don't know that you need any of this deviation language at all if you just have a more generic statement about protecting upland buffers.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think there's any objection to that.
Don't these exist in the Land Development Code anyway?
What was that, David?
Don't most of these exist in the Land Development Code anyway?
Well, not, so not, I think we have, there is really not the flexibility to kind of work through this at the application stage, and that's ultimately what we were trying to get to. We were thinking that this builds a...
The Land Development Code process, not through the comp plan. I don't think you should be this specific in the comp plan at all. I understand Mr. Moody doesn't want upland buffers to be regulated at all.
Yeah, that's a separate discussion.
It's a separate discussion, but I'm saying if you're going to regulate them, you should not have the specifics in the comp plan.
Yeah. I mean, we're okay with that. If, I mean, if the opportunity to, you know, do changes to the LDC presents itself, there are things that we have to change because it doesn't, the, the current LDC regs don't, don't work.
Well, here's, the Planning Commission loves stuff in the Land Development Code, so...
I have a question. Does, does, does an upland buffer qualify as open space? That's what I want to know.
Keith, to your, to your point, though, Terry's going to propose a whole new future land use scheme to which the Land Development Code will have to be updated following the adoption of that future land use scheme. So I don't see that any different in your case. So, yes, then we need to put what our aspirations are here, and then follow up with the, later with the appropriate Land Development Code regulation.
I think that, I think...
I don't think that's the normal course of how these things were.
Yeah, and I think that works for staff and me, so I don't have any issues with that.
And no, David, I don't, I'm not here saying that I don't want any regulation of wetland buffers. I'm saying I don't see why we should have a requirement which is different from the state. And I don't think the state has demonstrated that they're incompetent at regulating wetlands.
Well, the good news is that we kick all this to the Land Development Code, we can have that fight later.
Um, I, let's pencil it in, David. I'm, this is, yeah, very exciting stuff.
That's Keith's retirement date.
We should kick in all the Land Development Code and probably do that sometime in 2028, I think, when this expires.
Can I point out one other, one other point here? If you guys scroll back up to...
I'm going to have to go.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, I just wanted to make one point, and then, so 1.5.5. There's a statement in there about mitigation. Maybe, yeah, mitigation bank grants are subtle, so down at the bottom of that page. With preference banks located within Pasco County and applicable mitigation bank service area. My comment is that I don't think that's consistent with Senate Bill 492. It just went into effect on July 1st, so just have you guys take a look at that and make sure that that's consistent.
I wrote that down. Thanks.
Barbara Willhite, 8627. I have to get to a neighborhood meeting. I love neighborhood meetings. I just want to tell you a couple of stories, real quick. So, the way the categorization of wetlands went down is, I was in a meeting with the county attorney when I had David's job, and a person at Department of Community Affairs handed a piece of paper over the desk, over the conference room table, and said, you will adopt these categorization of wetlands. That's it. All there was, was you will do this. We said, okay. We put it in our comp plan. There's nothing more scientific about it. A person wanted it in our comp plan, and it got into our comp plan. An employee at the DCA, at a point in time, handed it to the county staff, myself and the county attorney, and said, you will put this in your comp plan, and we did. So that's one story. The second story is the 25-foot buffer. So, I was tasked when I was, Bobby Sumner tasked me with trying to figure out this conservation element and the ultimate ordinance, the Land Development Code as it was back when I was at the county. What to do about the wetland buffer? So we marched down to the EPC of Hillsborough County, and we said, you know, what do we do about this buffer? Is it right to do, can we, can we justify a 25-foot buffer on wetlands? And they said, no, that would be a taking because there's no basis for that. So if you look at the way the code was originally written for the wetland buffer, it was a presumption that could be overcome. After I left, that was changed. And it was written that way because we were worried at the time, based upon what this folks said at the EPC, that that's not justified, you cannot justify a one-size-fits-all buffer from a, from a ecological standpoint. So that was the second story of how the 25-foot buffer was never intended to be a one-size-fits-all. It was a presumption that then you could go through the process that Mr. Moody's talking about. And Bob Teetz actually helped write that language of how you would go through the process to, you know, to actually figure out what that buffer should be, so that we didn't have a one-size-fits-all that created a taking, Bert Harris, I don't know if Bert Harris was back then. But I just wanted to share those perspectives with you because we find, you know, it's like these things, where do they come from? I'm like, the only person that knows. And so just, you know, I'm dying over there. So that's it. I got to go. Good luck. I think you're all, you know, good comments and, and good, making good policy. That's what this is all about, so thank you. Oh, I would say one other thing. When we were reviewing this, this element, we were given a sheet of paper that said, here's what, here's the policy changes that we're seeking to make. So you didn't have to figure it out. Did you guys get that, too? Okay, because I didn't see it when I, when I looked at the agenda. I just, it just links...
It's part of their package.
Oh, so we, but the rest of, everybody else in the public, we get to see that, too? But I'm glad you got it because it's helpful that you don't have to try to figure out what changes are being, policy changes are being made. You can actually just look at the table and go, oh, that's what that's trying to do. So, glad you guys got that. Thank you. Bye.
Thanks, Barbara. Clark?
Planning Commissioners, if we can go back to the map series again, I want to look at the agricultural reserve map, and I know we're going to get rid of it, but I just want to make a little point about this. My initial, my initial, no, it's important because there are policies that we still have to work through that are in the, the language. I just want staff to understand, the Planning Commissioners, some of you have worked on these projects, but there are numerous projects within the area that say agricultural reserve that are intended to be urban in nature, not even suburban. And there are numerous gigantic employment projects in there, including the Target Center, all of Central Pasco, Employment Village, the Heinz, Cruz, and Douglas Project called KD 52. They're not agricultural, and that all, that's, that, my problem is, you're calling things agricultural that the board has decided since 2000, and I don't know who did this study in 2023, I've never seen it, but whoever did it must not be aware that the board has changed the comp plan numerous times since 2000, and many of these areas are not even intended by our board or our comprehensive plan to be agricultural. I will work with staff on the language, on what they're trying to achieve there, but as I've told them many times over the last few months, you don't need this stuff in the comp plan to do your job to plan out where you want to achieve open space. It's, it's not even relevant. If, if you're trying to acquire it, you can do that with your regular job and through the means you have with the ELAM and everything else. So that can be done. You don't need the map, and you don't even need the comp plan policies to do that. If you're trying to create a, a different form of open space and regulate people, generally that should be done through the Land Development Code. We should work through that together because there may be compensation that would be due to property owners, and we need to work through that together. If we can go to the next map, I also wanted to focus your attention on this map, and I spoke with Keith about this earlier today. It's problematic, too. It's depicting the existing greenways, and that's really not so much of a problem. But it's also identifying quote-unquote "opportunity zones" outside of eco corridors in many cases. And those areas cover a large swath of land angeline that are already approved. The area where the town center is supposed to go is within that area. And I don't see the county having an opportunity to acquire additional open space or greenways within that area. It also covers, and, you know, we've been working on changes with the Mitchell 41 project. We're already working on the eco corridor project, but this would then create another regulatory map over the area we're trying to develop. And so I'm not, this map, in my opinion, needs to go back to just identifying the greenways, which we previously had on a map in the comp plan. But this is basically creating another regulatory map that is inconsistent with, with the board's stated objective for some of these areas. Also covers two gigantic mines up there. There's a bunch of problems with it. But I will work with staff on it, but I don't see that this map needs to be in the plan as it is either. It's got major issues from my, where I sit, just as the other one did.
Thank you, Clark.
Do we want Keith to respond to that, or do you want to just speak for...
Yeah, Keith.
So, just for clarification, Keith Wiley, Director of Parks, Recreation, Natural Resources. This is another example of us, this is really about the trail network and the master planning effort for trails. This is, this was not, again, intended to say, "We're going to now look outside the corridors and regulate more acreage or anything like that." I think Hyatt just confirmed that it's actually in the trail section. I don't know what that section's called, but-
Place.
Place, okay. So, the purpose of this, and again, we ran this through the county attorney's office and through the planning department. We were saying, okay, there's a strong desire to create trails, a major trail system in Pasco County. As a, I've learned today, planning tool is not a great term. But as a planning tool, these are areas that we would look at if an application came in where we would partner with a future developer to figure out what, how they would connect to, to a large trail system and what that would look like, specifically focusing on the greenways. If there's another way to do it, we're, we're open to that.
Why didn't it end up in conserves then instead of place?
That I don't know, so, yeah.
If the standard's supposed to be an area for trails, I don't know why it's in conserves at all.
It shouldn't, it should not be. It should be in plays or some other, some other section.
Well, I mean, we could talk about how, what, what its purpose is in plays when we get to plays, but I'm just, if, if it's a recreational trail-
We did that one already.
Yeah, we did. So, why, I don't know why we're not dealing with this in plays. I understand Clark's concern because it's in the conservation element. That implies that we're maybe trying to conserve it, not-
Right.
Put trails in it.
Right, yes, absolutely.
Hi, Ms. Lee, Plan Development Economic Growth. So, this map is in the data and analysis of the conservation element. It's not in the comprehensive plan. We included it in the data and analysis because we make a reference to the corridor opportunity zones as we were discussing the conservation lands and such.
He's telling me he never intended it to be any data supporting anything related to conservation. That it was only supposed to be some supporting map to a trail opportunity.
We have a reference to it in-
It didn't even be in your data and analysis to support the element if it's not a conservation tool.
Well, we do have the ecological corridors, so that's another reason why we have it.
Ecological corridors are a conservation, that's a, that's a true statement, that those are conservation. The ecological corridor part of this is not the issue, it's the-
The buffers around ecological corridors.
Keith is saying he never intended it to be a conservation tool.
If I'm understanding correctly, the, the map doesn't need to be included in the data and analysis for conservation because it's referencing recreational opportunities.
That's what Keith is telling me is that he's intent, no, we can get, we need to have that discussion later about how we make it match his intent for, for, for plays, but- I think Clark raises a good point, is it doesn't, I mean, he's raising other points, but, but my point is, I don't even know why we're having this conversation at all on the conservation element. The map in my version, the map in my version just has the ecological corridors and public land on it.
The next parks, neighborhoods, and natural areas.
So, according to the data and analysis, the, the Pasco, the Pasco conserves chapter creates a comprehensive conservation strategy for the protection of county's natural resources through a combination of policies for ecological corridors. This is 2.1 in the data and analysis. Additionally, the county's greenway corridor opportunity zones, thus being referenced in the inclusion of the map, as implemented in the greenways, trails, and blueways master plan, aims to connect parks, neighborhoods, and natural areas while encouraging mitigation to occur through incorporation of long-term conservation of upland habitats, restoration of altered upland habitats, wetland enhancement, and wetland protection.
That's different than what Keith just said.
The conservation strategy includes land acquisition, management, and preservation of listed, and it goes on. So, there's a reference there. So to the extent that the reference needs to be removed, is that what the consensus is?
Well, I'm going with what Keith said, his purpose of for this map, it was solely for trail, it was a potential future trail mapping exercise, not anything to do with conserving upland habitats, restoration of upland habitats, or wetland enhancement.
That's correct, David.
So, it appears to me that you need to remove it completely from your conservation element and strike this language.
Okay. We can amend 2.1 in the DNA, the data and analysis. I'll mark it on mine.
In the same language, deleting the term agricultural reserve?
Is it, is it referenced?
Well-
I didn't, maybe I didn't get that.
If that map gets deleted, which is not like Keith was willing to do, then yes, that would also be deleted.
Oh, there it is, yeah, 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 I see it. Okay. Right, and then if you take that out, the map goes away from conserves as well.
My understanding of what Keith just said is that the sole purpose of the map is to connect parks and neighborhoods, which is the first part of this.
That's correct, yeah. So, through, through the trails' master planning process, many things were identified, but the one thing that was very clear was that we needed to focus trail opportunities along the greenway systems. So, again, using this as a planning document, this is where, this is where you would steer someone to say, "Okay, maybe there's a discussion about a potential trail project to connect to a larger rib system that maybe runs on the, on the, the larger corridors," or something like that.
But I believe that more is like, when you're reviewing your neighborhood, neighborhood park compliance, that you would like be looking for connections to the ecological quarters when they, when they come in.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, well, that's a very different than what was presented to us today.
Yeah, well, again, this, it shouldn't even actually be, it shouldn't even be in this section. It should be in, it should be in place, yeah, so. I think I hopped in front of someone, so.
Cynthia. Cynthia, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you very much, Cynthia Spideydel, Barbis Kramer, 2002 West Cleveland Street in Tampa. So, just a couple of quick issues. I've been in constant contact with staff over the agricultural reserve language, so none of my comments should be a surprise to them, but we, I have been concerned with that map from the get-go. So, and unfortunately, there are an increasing number of frustrated landowners in that area who, who perceive that the ability to develop their land is being continuously curtailed by an increasing regulatory purview such as that map, especially because it's in the conservation element. So it gives a perception that it's supposed to be conserved. So, you know, I went back to the 2006 technical document just to even look at how the rural transition area was created, and it's literally like a penciled, sketched map. So I don't think that the areas have been particularly analyzed in granular, granular detail. I was a little thrown off by the open space discussion. I thought that the intent of the agricultural reserve was to potentially allow Keith to apply ELAMP money to provide opportunities for connectivity when feasible, when development kind of comes in. But, so I was definitely a little confused by that, so I'd have to take a look at any, any new language. I don't, I don't think anybody would be objectionable to ELAMP money being used to create connectivity in this area if, if that's what the intent was. So, let me just make sure I got my list covered. So, then just switching back to wetland functionality. So, I think that, and I'm not a wetland expert, I'm not a, but I do help people go through the site plan process. And I think part of the issue that we had with the sizing, the category-one sizing, was that it doesn't look at the functionality necessarily. And sometimes impacting a category-one wetland, or what is defined as a wetland, category-one wetland, you know, might be helpful in the overall context of a better site design. So I think that we just wanted some more flexibility to ensure that if something's defined as a category wetland and, you know, impacting it to whatever extent could be permitted is actually in the benefit of achieving a better site plan, that that flexibility is somehow written in. And I agree, it shouldn't be in the comp plan, it should be in the Land Development Code. But that was sort of the intent of that administrative variance language that you saw in there. I think that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else while we're taking public comment?
Good afternoon again, William McCaw, 7638 Antioch Drive. I'm going to have a slightly unpopular opinion. The current definition of open space in the comp plan is actually, I think, more in line of what Keith wants than what that map and the new revision to the open space is. I think if you divide it into separate categories, one being residential, one being commercial, industrial, and then another being agricultural, conservation. If you split open space definitions based off of future land use categories, where those future land use categories are encompassing of similar land uses, you can create a better open space definition for these agricultural lands we want to preserve. And I point to the Pomodoro Ridge MPUD, MPD as a perfect example of a good way that that was open space preserved in an agricultural, or former agricultural space, where everything north of the Vision Road, some, I believe, 1,100 acres was preserved for long-term. Conversely, in Connected City, open space is King Lake or some of the neighborhood or pocket parks within Connected City. So I think reusing the current definition of open space to tool it to what Keith was proposing, where open space now is divided amongst the various land uses might serve better long-term for conservation.
So you want us to keep the definition and get rid of the map?
I think changing the definition such that it specifically calls out the land use, whereas currently, it seemed like there was a little bit of mixing of the definition. I believe Terry was speaking earlier, he brought up that the residential, non-residential, and there was one other land use, but it's-
So are you suggesting there should be a, a varying open space definition for each future land use category?
Yes, and that's what I'm saying, is maintaining that current open space definition and simply molding the new open space element and the new conservation element such that it clearly defines, if you're looking at a residential development, open space can be the parks that we're requiring you to build. If you're building in Connected City or one of the special planning areas, it's these certain requirements that we're looking at for third spaces or civic spaces. And then for agricultural land, it's, we want you to have undeveloped areas, whether that's former farmlands, or wetlands, or ELAMP land, whatever that may be. I had another one, and it's gone from the top of my head, so I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, I mean, the fundamental problem, and staff can explain this better, is even though we have a definition of open space, the only regulations in our code that I believe that actually implemented is neighborhood parks, and that's it.
Correct.
There's nothing else to, to-
Yes.
To regulate all the other open spaces that we might need.
Right, and I think that's why it's important to have it in the concern, Pasco conserves section, is once we've defined open space, have a policy that Pasco County shall define in the Land Development Code or through policies, what open space is required. And then it's further driven down in the LDC. Thank you.
Anybody else? I got a couple of policy-specific just questions for clarification. 1.5.2. If I read the last sentence, it looks like the word issuance was changed to submittal. Am I interpreting that to say that the delineation of wetlands has to be approved by the district before we submit a site plan application?
That's already in the Land Development Code. I can go grab that real quick, I have it printed out.
Can I ask a question? Why is that? Well, I was going to ask, why is that necessary? And I would tell you, under the current regulatory language of buffers in the current version of the comp plan, I could see why we would do that. But if we were to get rid of the regulatory statements regarding buffers in the comp plan, then that necessarily wouldn't be required. And where I'm going with this, Jackie, is you can, when you submit an application to the water management district, you can have the delineation done as part of your ERP application rather than going for a formal jurisdictional determination prior to making application. In my own practice, I always recommend that my clients go get the formal first, and then we know exactly what we're working with. If they wait till they file the ERP, then things may get elastic around the wetlands a little bit as, as that line moves here and there, but-
Yes.
I'm just trying to understand why we, again, just from where I come from, I don't see the need for duplication of what the state already does.
Right, I agree. I mean, the state gives you the flexibility.
So in 805.3, I don't know if you're able to pull that up in MUNICODE, under 805.3B? I'll let her pull it up. Oh.
Land Development Code.
That B where it says "specific." So it speaks to the precise delineation of wetlands shall be determined through site-specific studies and field determinations by the applicant in SWIMMUD and/or DEP as applicable prior to masquerading stormwater management plan and report filled construction plan or operating permit. Application submission delineated boundaries shall be submitted at the time of application.
Okay, my, I'm going to get back on my soapbox, regulating through the comp plan. So, it may be in the existing code, don't disagree, but the difference is that the code, there's deviation processes for the Land Development Code. There's alternative standards, there's a section 303.6C, whatever allows staff to approve to waive application requirements. There's a whole set of relief procedures for the Land Development Code to deal with unique situations. The comp plan doesn't have that. So, the problem with putting, being that specific in the comp plan is then it makes it very difficult for Patrick, Terry, whoever, to, or even your own department, if you wanted to grant some relief from that requirement, you can't do it if it's in the comp plan. You can if it's in the Land Development Code. So, I don't know why you're feeling a need to sort of codify everything that's in the, in the code into the comp plan.
Yeah, and I think from your previous statements, too, so we kind of, we have an understanding of that now, so it's going to be throughout where we're making these kind of changes, where we're just mirroring what's in the LDC. So we can fix those.
You need to start thinking about going back through this element and anything that is already regulated through the Land Development Code. Take it out. Because it-
Yes. We have struck through a lot of the LDC requirements that are in the comp plan, so we will go back and then we-
Yeah, I don't know what happened with this element, but this one seems to have a lot of very specific requirements in it that are already regulated through the Land Development Code.
Yes, we can definitely make those updates.
Okay.
Can you talk about the next line, just what the thinking is here? It says, "Pasco County may delineate wetlands for single-family development sites that are zoned residential and not within an MPUD."
We need to go back to the comp plan on the screen here.
Oh.
1.5.2.
We're not, we're not in the code anymore. He's going back to the comp plan.
I'm sorry, this is-
1.5.2.
Yes, the second.
Yes. Or a planned subdivision without a valid environmental resource permit. I'm not understanding what you're trying to get at there.
Sure, so I know we did discuss this a little bit at the workshops we had in the focus groups, but, so currently, the way the code is written, I guess, and the comp plan, we're supposed to defer to DEP or SWIMMUD. So for our single-family homes, those projects that come in through BCS Building Construction Services, the way it's written, we would have to, they would have to go get a formal delineation done with DEP. So we're trying to allow, to offer that service to the county citizens, so that way we're, it's a cost savings for them. It helps speed, speed up their application process. And this is only going to be for BCS applications. And this is only going to be for BCS applications, it doesn't have anything to do with, you know, site plan review.
So if we're to strike the issue we just spoke about, then is that still necessary?
I mean, in my opinion, this is policy, just be a general statement about a desire to delineate properly delineate wetlands in coordination with SWIFTMUD, and that's all it should say. I mean, your code should deal with the details that, like, who delineates when, when it's got to be submitted, and all those details should all be in your Land Development Code.
Okay. And I think that was our intent, just to put it in here, that way we can put it into the Land Development Code. So you're saying it doesn't need to be in here, we can just add that to when we make our LDC amendments, just for the single family.
I'll tell you why I asked the question. I know what you mean in that, yes, a homeowner doesn't need to call one of my expensive environmental consultants and then go through, pay the $777 and get the formal delineation. But it says, "single-family development sites that are zoned residential and not within an MPUD." Well, I could get 50 acres of land that's zoned R4 and then ask you to come do the delineation, right? That doesn't necessarily restrict it to a single-family home lot. It says single-family, sites that are zoned residential. So that could be land that's R1, it could be 100 acres of R1, it could be 50 acres of R4. I appreciate that they want to give the service to the homeowner. What I'm not wanting to do is provide welfare to developers either.
And yeah, and that was not our intention either, so...
But regardless, I think this belongs in the Land Development Code.
Sure.
Top of the comp plan.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to, anything else on that one? Policy 1.5.10. And this is just a definition thing, more from my knowledge than anything else, I think. The end of the first sentence, primary tributaries, is that defined somewhere?
It's already defined in the comp plan glossary.
The existing?
The existing comp plan glossary.
You go over what that is.
Can you? Thank you.
Primary tributaries.
So it says, "water body shown on the most recent USGS survey quadrangle sheets as having perennial flow which eventually drain into a permanent open water body."
And what, well, I sat in the stakeholder, some stakeholder meetings, so I already know, but can you explain to the rest of the planning commission what the intent is for the 50-foot setback?
So it would be, you know, more system-specific, so for example, I'm trying to think of the name of, like a branch that comes off of Cypress Creek or something like that, that would also be subject, because it's a primary tributary, would also be subject to the 50-foot setback.
Right, but the intent of the 50-foot setback. So here, this is something that's another regulatory statement in the comp plan, we're requiring a 50-foot setback. And when I, when I had meetings with staff, the explanation that I got for that was, we want to protect people from potential dangers of floodwaters, which is noble. My comment as an engineer is the horizontal setback from a waterway is irrelevant, it's the vertical separation between that waterway that is important, so I'm trying to figure out why we need this.
All about typography.
Well, and I'm going to add again, same statement I keep making, I don't know why you have a specific requirement in the comp plan.
It's already in there too. We just moved this section up from, it was actually under the...
I get it, but...
Water quality section.
Let's just say, to Mr. Moody's point, you had a particular development which had a huge vertical drop between the development and the primary tributary, and everybody agreed that you only needed 10 feet in that setback that that would adequately protect against flooding. All the intent of the setback would be met with maybe 10, so let's just say 25 feet, okay? If it's in the comp plan, you have no ability to deviate from that requirement. If it's in the Land Development Code, Mr. Moody could come in and say, "I want an all standard," because I can show you that if it's, because of my vertical drop, the 25 feet is sufficient. You can't do that if it's in the comp plan, but you can if it's in the Land Development Code.
Mm-hmm.
So I think if you go back to the comp plan text, I think it should just say, if somebody could put it back up.
What, I think one of the things that's been exposed here, and I don't mean that in a bad way, only to make this process move forward in a better manner, is I think staff feels like if it's, if it's in the comp plan today, it's almost like it's sacred, I can't get rid of it. And I think the message that's being delivered today is, yes, if you see a regulatory statement, get that out of the comp plan and get it into the Land Development Code, and then I guess we can debate the merits of that when we try to amend the LDC, whether we need to have a 50-foot horizontal setback or a 10-foot vertical, you know, setback from a river. We can debate what the, what the, what the technical requirements would be. But I think the whole point is, just because it exists in the comp plan today doesn't mean it's sacred and can't be moved out and put into the Land Development Code.
Yeah, I mean, if it's just Pasco County shall continue to implement land development requirements requiring setbacks from wetland and surface water lines adjacent to the, these rivers, and without getting into the specifics of what those requirements are, that's probably fine.
Okay.
And then you don't need to have things like the county may consider a reduced buffer for sites having an existing permit or non-conforming seawall, because that, that could be handled through the Land Development Code process. If you don't regulate through the comp plan, you don't have to have exceptions in the comp plan either. You're just making the comp plan longer when you do that. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So, but the bigger point, which echoes Mr. Moody's point, is remember that the Land Development Code has deviation processes. Let, let Terry, Patrick, David Ingle, that's their job is to evaluate case-specific applications and determine whether deviations should be granted. Let them do their job. And they'll coordinate with you on those deviations if they affect your department, but let them do their job without regulating through the comp plan.
Understood, thank you.
Okay.
That's all I had.
I got some nit, probably nitpicky language things. I'll start at the very top in the introduction. The second line says, "this chapter ensures the continued identification and protection." I just get nervous about the word insured all the time. Does that need to be more, does that mean that if there's a problem, we don't protect some natural resource? So that'd be promote the continued identification and protection?
I'm sorry, which policy are we on?
It's in the introduction.
He's up at the introduction.
Second line.
Second line.
It says, "the chapter ensures the continued identification and protection of the county's significant natural resource."
All the way.
Mm-hmm, the very top.
I think it's all the way at the top.
Page seven.
Yeah, page seven.
First paragraph, second sentence.
Page seven. There you go, second, end of the second line. This chapter ensures the continued identification.
It's a strong word.
Yeah, it is a strong word.
You can change it to promotes. Is that better?
Makes me feel better.
If it makes you feel better, that's why we're here.
That's right.
And I don't, I don't believe we, I was like, I don't think that we actually wrote the introduction. Oh, you did, okay.
But it's a valid comment, I think it'd be better to say promotes.
Yep, noted.
Ensures makes it sound like we're guaranteeing it's going to happen.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then down to 1.1.1, what, so this is talking about connections of open space to natural resources, is it trying to just provide open space connected to natural resources? Is it trying to connect natural, like, connect conservation lands together, like, make connections between conservation lands?
No, this is like the beginning.
Yeah, this is the beginning. This is kind of where we started, which, which, in the sake of time, I hope we don't have to repeat, but, yeah, that, that, everything we discussed in the beginning is kind of where we led off with this, so, if that makes sense.
Okay, all right, yeah. Right after that 1.1.2, we added language to, for protection of listed species, mitigation plan to be approved and implemented and then verified by Pasco County. How are we going to verify that, or are we already doing that?
Yeah, that's something we're already doing, so that probably just needs to come out. That's already something that's, that would just need to be maybe modified a little bit in 803, but we're already doing that.
Okay.
Through site plan review.
113, manatee protection, it says that we're going to require all development within its range to adhere to established guidelines. I think the manatee's range is all in the water.
Mm-hmm.
So should that say, what development are we doing in the water? Should that be like coastal development adjacent to its range? I don't know what those requirements are.
So, I'll help you with that one. I happen to have a project, it's a marina, right, with a boat ramp, and actually, this is a great opportunity because manatees are an issue right now in our permitting, in that Pasco County does not have an approved manatee protection plan with, with FWCC or FWS. And so it may be, the onus may be on my client to actually develop the manatee protection plan. It would be helpful if the county had one.
Currently, this just says this is going to be handled on a case-by-case basis, basically, is what it's, that's how I read it. But you're saying that other counties have an established plan?
Yes, other counties have established manatee protection plans, but Pasco County does not.
Mr. Moody's correct, and so the county would have to petition FWC to start the development and creation of a plan. It could be by area, region, or project-specific. We've never entertained that because the, the actual work required to do that's pretty significant.
Yeah.
So, so if you would like to do it for us, that'd be great.
I think, well, I may have to do that, yes.
That'd be a tidy little consulting gig.
But even if we did, this policy doesn't prohibit it because it just says established guidelines. If we created additional guidelines, it wouldn't prohibit us from doing that.
I think it's referring to the existing guidelines, and a lot of this, this was, again, was existing language, and we just kind of tried to update it to what, how it currently works today.
While you guys are there, if you don't mind me jumping in, if you could go back up to, I forgot, there's one other comment, or just observation, 1.1.2. Mitigation plans, where was I? Management or mitigation plan should be approved and implemented in accordance with state and federal requirements and verified by Pasco County as required, right? Because a management plan or mitigation plan is not required on every project, so just, semantically just thrown as required at the end of that, possibly.
Well, I think we're going to be removing that anyways.
This is another one of those very specific regulatory requirements that probably should come out anyway.
But I'll, I'll make a note of it just in case it needs to translate into the LDC.
Okay.
Then 1.5.11, just wording here, it says Pasco County shall locate and design roadway improvements to minimize the impact of jurisdictional wetlands, should be two jurisdictional wetlands, I think.
Just to change of to two?
Yeah. And then down to 1.6, the title, that's groundwater protection and surface water quality. There also are policies under there that are protecting surface water, so I don't know if just water protection's more appropriate, or if it really matters, but just something I've noticed.
Yeah, the thing was, we took out the surface water, because the buffer requirements in that setback section for rivers and surface waters used to exist under this section, so we moved it up into the wetlands area. So we took out the surface water protection, but you're suggesting just naming the section water protection?
Yeah, because I think there are provisions here that talk about surface water quality protection.
Mm-hmm.
Like I said, it's probably not that big of a deal, but just... Trying to see what I saw after that that made me think...
Could I just ask a clarification question? So you're saying that you had jurisdiction of the surface waters, so you were, that's the change that you were making?
Just when it comes to the buffers for those certain systems, yeah. We didn't really have any input, as much input on the lower...
On the groundwater.
On the groundwater.
Yeah, I think groundwater means something in particular. If we just change it to water, that's very general, and we don't want to talk about Gulf water or other kinds of waters, just groundwater in this case.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Can I ask one stormwater question? So 1.0, this is where Mr. Moody can help me. 1.6.1, that second sentence, wasn't there an issue at one point about that sentence potentially being inconsistent with the Land Development Code requirement? The Land Development Code allows, like, modeling that deviates, potentially deviates from that requirement? I don't know if this is the policy, if there was a different one, but there was, I remember at one point, there was a discussion with Stormwater about the potential inconsistency between the comp plan requirement and Land Development Code.
I would tell you that that is inconsistent with the current SWIFTMUD regulations, and so for instance, in our LDC 1104 flood damage prevention, we actually require compensatory storage as the means of mitigation for fill in a floodplain. The water management district will accept either compensatory excavation or compensatory storage as an option, or you can demonstrate through hydraulic modeling that you've not had an impact on the 100-year floodplain. Trying to think of a simplistic example, if I filled inside the floodplain of a river, one way to mitigate for that would be to excavate out an equivalent amount of dirt to the amount that I placed in the floodplain. The other way would be to improve the hydraulics of the river channel so that I do not raise the flood stage. And the way you intrude the hydraulics is I could widen the channel, I could smooth the channel.
Straighten it out.
Right, straighten it out.
I guess my point is, is that if our staff is not actually implementing what this sentence says, and they're implementing either SWIFTMUD or county LDC requirements, I don't, I think it needs to come out of the comp plan. And I realize we don't have anybody from Stormwater here, but, but, but somebody needs to pose that question to them, because I don't want to continue to have an inconsistency between our comp plan and actual practice.
The only play, I would tell you that in, when I read that protection of floodplains, I have no issue with a policy that says Pasco County shall protect 100-year...
Yeah, I'm not talking about the first sentence. The first sentence I'm okay with.
I actually have a problem with the first sentence.
Oh, you do, okay.
And other natural areas which have beneficial hydrological characteristics. Well, what are those? That's pretty vague. That could be anything. I have no problem with the first one, two, three, four, five, six, seven words.
Well, but even then, it defers to the Land Development Code, so we either do or don't do that in the Land Development Code. I mean, if we don't actually do it in the Land Development Code, I'm...
We do, we, our stormwater regulations, which by the way, are way, way, way out of date, and in December are going to be really out of date. We redo that through the stormwater section and through 1104 flood damage prevention.
So, I guess my main point is that the second sentence appears to be a regulatory requirement that needs to be put into, just deferred to the Land Development Code. If somebody could check this.
Yeah, we'll take the lead on that, David, and communicate with someone in public infrastructure.
I mean, I remember getting an RLS on this issue, and the question that came to me was, they specifically said that sentence was inconsistent with the code, which one governs, and I had to tell them, well, the comp plan governs. But then they said, "we're not following the comp plan." I'm like, "well, fix it." So this is your chance to fix it.
1.6.6 reads that Pasco County should prohibit subject tanks, buildings, and/or public utilities not designed in accordance with state and federal regulations. public utilities not designed in accordance with state and federal regulations from being located on unsuitable soils to prevent water contamination. I would think we're not permitting any of those things, not designed in accordance with state and federal regulations. It seems like something we just don't need to say here, the way it's written.
That's another place where we're, I'm not even sure why it's in here because the state, the state is the permitting agency for the utilities and/or the onsite sewage treatment and disposal systems.
Well, if they're not designed with state and federal regulations in mind, they shouldn't be permitted anywhere.
Right.
Well, and then your problem is what is an unsuitable soil? You haven't defined what an unsuitable soil is. And I can tell you, historically, I know what the problem is, why that's in here. I can think of the example of in the 1990s when the city of Port Ritchie decided to install sewers, get the city off of septics, which was great. And they put in sewers and then dropped them right into marl and clay and then used the trench spoil as the backfill and paved over it. And then a year later, the streets had sunk down a foot in the middle of roads, so.
And, and just to clarify, you recommended to remove that policy?
Yeah, I think it's not, I don't think, well, I'm not sure what it's trying to accomplish. If there's something we're missing that it's trying to accomplish, then we should reword it. But it's, right now, to me, it basically says, we're not going to allow anything the state doesn't. Well, that's true.
Mm-hmm.
To me, it sounds like, you know, if the state doesn't allow it, we'll still allow it as long as it's on a suitable soil. That's what.
Right.
Unless we're trying to be more stringent than state and federal regulations, there really wouldn't be a point to it.
Yeah. It's trying to be less.
Which I think they're arguing that it's actually, is arguably less stringent. But you don't want to be less stringent than state and federal.
My, my particular issue is how, how does this, the county work, enforce this policy if I'm not developing a utility within the Pasco County utility service area? I put a utility in FGUA's service area? You guys don't even know I did it.
I mean, do you still have to apply for county building permits to be able to do that, though? Even if it's in FGUA's area?
That depends. Not necessarily.
Well, this actually raises an interesting question, which is probably a code enforcement question, which is, if this, if this prohibition only appears in our comp plan and not in the code, could our code even enforcement even prohibit it? Like, could we even issue a citation for violating the comp plan?
Yeah, I mean, is there, can you get a code enforcement violation for creating your own cesspool, you know, with a plastic kiddie pool? You know, I mean, you should be able to.
Yeah. Well, I was just going to note that before we, Keith makes a good point, we should probably talk to our, the relevant subject matter experts. But also, before there's a final decision to remove this, we probably should check the state statute, which does require us to address groundwater recharge areas.
Well, but also check with our code enforcement staff because even if it is consistent, even if state statute requires this, is it, is a code, is the comp plan the right place to put it? Because I, I'm not sure if we have the ability to prohibit something that's only in our comp plan and not in our code.
So you want us to check with code compliance if it's actually enforcing?
Yeah. What would be the mechanism for us to actually prohibit it? Is my point. Like, I don't know if we can issue a citation. I've never seen a citation issued for violating policy 1.0, you know, a policy of the comp plan. So.
That's true.
Maybe, maybe we can, but I've never seen it done. They're called code enforcement, not comp plan enforcement. So, I don't know if they can do it or not.
And our land development code doesn't have the utility regulations. We have utility policies that the county utility system enforces. We have a utility section in the code of ordinance.
We can enforce the code of ordinances or the land development code. That I'm confident we can do. I'm just not sure that we can enforce something that's only in the comp plan. Like, so even if it said that we will prohibit this, I don't know if we have a way to actually do it, if it's not in the code. But it may be in the code or comp, code, land development code or code of ordinances, I don't know, I'm not sure.
That was the point I was trying to make, that if I'm in a private utility, you don't even know I did it.
Right. But if it was only in the land development code, we wouldn't have to worry about this because, or the code of ordinance, because we obviously can only enforce what was in our jurisdiction.
I mean, the, the provision for the policy may be resolved also if we just change the language up and make it less regulatory in, in its scope.
Yeah, I mean.
But we'll talk to, we'll talk to those constituent departments, utilities and.
I mean, if it said something generally, like Pasco County should continue to implement requirements related to septic tanks, buildings, and public utilities, I.
But even if it just said that Pasco County will continue to, uh, implement protection of groundwater and suitable soils in the LD, in the land development code, is that what we're trying to, if that's the right, if that's a legislative requirement to address groundwater protection in unsuitable soils?
Anyway, take another look at it, please.
Yep.
Um, 1.6.13, it just mentions high aquifer recharge areas. Are those defined somewhere already?
It almost seems like that'd be a good map.
Now we want a map.
Oh, kidding, oh, kidding aside.
That's a useful map.
Well, since this is a future regulation, arguably you don't need it mapped, because you could have it through the future regulation.
Right.
But if you're just trying to figure out the intent of what we, we might regulate in the future, and I understand why you want to know what those are.
As a map, uh, the current comprehensive plan doesn't have, doesn't have one that identifies with a high aquifer recharge.
He's asking, is it defined anywhere? What a high aquifer recharge area is?
Uh, does the glossary?
No.
No.
We don't have a definition of this.
I'm trying to think, like, I know that, like, I don't know, SWF mud's got those defined, maybe, you know, as defined by SWF mud or something like that would be appropriate. They're just, we find a way to define, to indicate what those are.
We can do that.
And then 1.6.18, I don't know that I've got a recommended solution for this, but it's reducing nutrient loads in surface waters. We speak to the specific Wikiwachi BMAP and the Tampa Bay Reasonable Assurance Plan. Is that too specific? Should that be, should this be more general in that we're going to, uh, ident, you know, implement, implement any BMAPs? Because there could be new BMAPs or just, I don't know, it seems like it's a little too specific that we're limiting what we are going to do to reduce nutrient loads in surface waters?
Go ahead.
Um, it is common practice for, um, for the reduction of the nutrients loads to use the Tampa Bay Estuary Assurance Plan, so that's why we included it in here.
Yeah.
As a reference.
And I think that's okay, but maybe a sentence that allows for other plans, like other BMAPs that might be implemented, you know, things change.
Besides the Wikiwachi.
Right.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think to his point is that we may end up, as the state is doing more and more water, surface water testing, we may end up with more basin management action plans that affect Pasco County other than the Wikiwachi BMAP.
Okay. We can reword that, maybe completely remove Wikiwachi and just.
Just basin.
Say basin.
Adopted basin management action plans.
Okay. Okay.
And then, all right, down to, I think, 1.8.2, that's completely new. It says that Pasco County shall coordinate and support federal, state. Can we coordinate data collection? Or is that, we just need the support? I'm not sure what coordinate means we'll do.
Which one are you on?
1.8.2.
That's jockeying. I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, so 1.8, just on 1.8.2, it says that we'll coordinate and support those data collection efforts. Like, I'm not sure what coordinate means we would do, if we would, if just support would be appropriate?
Yeah, I think that that, that was, that's what we're trying to achieve. So just take out coordinate and, and just leave support.
Yep. And then down to 1.8.4 on existing.
He just created less work for you.
Now we just, with coordinate, we would reach out to them. Now we don't have to reach out to them.
And then on 1.8.4, it says that Pasco County will, shall continue to maintain and monitor as required existing artificial reef sites. One, what's, what is, as required by what or, like, what's, what's the?
As, it should be as required by the permits.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's all I had.
Can I see you good?
I'm good.
Quick question, just something for consideration. I see that we're working with divers to monitor our artificial reefs. Has anybody given consideration to monitoring the protection of our cave systems? Pasco County has a very unique resource. Don't get me wrong, I'm not advocating cave diving to anybody, but this is, we have a very unique resource here in Pasco County, and that's something that we should be looking at, providing some protection to.
I need it too.
We will note that.
Things, what I'm getting at, one, I think you're half crazy if you go cave diving.
I agree.
What I hate to see is cave systems where we get cave divers that come out in the future and tell us, yeah, we found a whole bunch of debris and litter, and they left this garbage down here, and this is where they dumped all their scallop shells and.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
A good point.
Part of our aquifer system.
Yes.
Those caves.
All right. Anything else?
Good.
You all, you all have definitely beat that dead horse.
You ready to retire now, Keith?
Thank you.
Thank you.
But our caves, open space.
Depends on the cave.
All right. So I guess my only question is, when is the next workshop?
Tomorrow.
I hope not.
7:00 PM tonight? No, I'm just kidding. 8:27.
Did you coordinate your outfit with our element for meeting? Well done.
Thank you.
Six days from now.
Yes.
Yeah, and then we will be discussing the adapts element. Your favorite, Mr. Moody.
Check.
Yep.
I'm sure they'll be fun to be had by all.
What time is that?
All day and into the night.
10:00 AM. 10:00 AM on.
Yeah, 10:00 AM.
Wait, which element is that?
Adapts.
Adapts. It's like a party invitation, 10:00 AM to question mark.
I did send the packet via email as well, so hopefully you guys had the chance, or you will be reviewing it at some point before our meeting.
It's about 10 o'clock. Okay. Well, if anybody has anything else, I guess, do we need to adjourn?
I think you can just, it's a workshop, I think you can just.
We're good. Workshop has ended. Thank you.
You have power of chair to stop it.
Power of chair.
Yeah.
Look at that.